I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and first thing we're going to do is rise and let Commissioner Neal lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Dr. Peter Murphy lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for the opportunity to live in a free society. We thank you for the opportunity to pay our issues. We thank you for living in a community that provides so much for us. We just thank you for that. We pray that as we go through this meeting, that we will just stop and observe the feelings of other people. Let us remember to remain civil and most of all, let us give you honor for all the work that you've done.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you'll be seated, please. First item on the agenda is the public comment period and first, first individual signed up, Carol Blackshear, if you'll come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name's Caroline Blackshear. Am I good to go?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to first of all, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm 27 years old and born and raised in Glen County. I've always been very proud of my community. Two months ago was my first time visiting Glen County Animal Control. I was horrified by the number of dogs living in this facility and the condition in which they have to live. I've been volunteering there ever since. All of us in this room and all other Glen County residents should be disgusted and ashamed by how many dogs are in this facility. How our community's domestic animals that have been surrendered, lost, and abandoned are being treated and how our county is handling the issue of dog overpopulation. At this time, I'd like to ask each of you as elected representatives of Glen County, when was the last time you visited our animal control? I can tell you from my recent visits that we're far from where we should be. There are multiple areas in which we're lacking, but the ones that I want to speak on tonight are transparency, awareness, and education, really the lack thereof. Can anyone tell me how many dogs are currently at Glen County Animal Control? How many of those are adoptive, adoptable? How many of those are on stray hold? No one knows because this information is not easily accessible to the public. If you look at social media, you would have no clue what dogs were there. If you looked at the website, you'd have a better understanding, but even then, not all the dogs are listed. Your best bet would be to drive out to animal control and look at each dog yourself, but even then, the dog population there is constantly changing with dogs coming in and dogs leaving. So how many dogs have been killed this year? How many of those have just been killed for space? I know of at least 13 dogs that have lost their lives since I started volunteering in September. And why do I say at least? It's because this information is kept in the dark. There is no list of at-risk dogs. There's no plea for the community to help. There's no plea for fosters, adopters, and rescuers to help save these dogs. And usually there is no warning. So who knows, I say 13 dogs, when really the number could be a lot higher. Why are more citizens not talking about this? I would say the number one reason is because no one has any idea it's happening. There is zero transparency and a lack of effort to create awareness and drive education for this issue. I've lived in this county my entire life and I never knew it was a concern. And I certainly didn't know what was going on at animal control. There are perfectly healthy dogs, living creatures who have done nothing wrong and who rely on us, that are losing their life for space and no one wants to talk about it. So what are, you know, the consequences for the lack of transparency, awareness, and education on this issue? This cycle will continue. The overpopulation of dogs will bring more dogs into the shelter, which will create more undesirable living conditions for the dogs already there. Having to put multiple dogs in kennels, so then there's more dog-on-dog incidents happening, more dogs sitting in crowded kennels for 24 hours a day, not getting their 10 minutes of outside time because of the lack of volunteers. And the volunteers that are there trying to help are just trying to continuously keep up with the rising number of dogs. All while perfectly healthy dogs are being euthanized, just so the next dog can be brought in, put in the same exact kennel, and the cycle repeats itself. Why does no one want to address this issue? It's because it's ugly. It's an ugly truth. No one wants to talk about it because it will make people upset. It's much easier to use the out-of-side, out-of-mind ignorance is bliss tactic, because if no one knows what's going on, no one can get upset. No one wants to talk about it because it will be a challenging issue to correct. It's easier to continue to do things the way they've been done in the past, instead of admitting there is a major issue and implementing changes to try to resolve it. People in this community do care about this issue and they do, and they are passionate about these animals. They deserve the right to know what's going on and they deserve the right to try to help. People deserve to be educated and aware of this community issue so that we can work towards finding a solution. Something has to change. To know there is a major issue and to sit on our hands and do nothing about it is not fair to this community and it's not fair to these dogs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackshear. Next speaker, Jim McDougal. Come up and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Jim McDougal and thank you for letting me speak tonight. I am also here to speak about the need for a new animal control shelter. I've been a volunteer at the animal control facility for probably the last two and a half years. Before going into any further detail, I'd like to provide some statistics that I've gathered. In Glen County alone, there's an estimated 56,000 dogs and 66,000 cats, based on the population as of 2017. Doesn't, that doesn't include breeders, that's just people that have dogs and cats. In 2018, the shelter took in 954 animals. Of that 954 animals, 133 were euthanized. Of that 133 animals, 62 were healthy and the remainder were deemed unhealthy and untreatable. It's not known how many of those untreatable and unhealthy animals could have been saved had the proper facilities, basically isolation rooms been available. The number would also be higher if it weren't for the other organizations within the county, animal rescue groups like No Kill Glen County, Cars, Wags, that take some of the unhealthy and untreatable animals from the shelter. Why do we need a new shelter? According to the Guidelines for Standards of Care in Animal Control Shelters, excuse me, according to Guidelines for Standards of Care in Animal Control Shelters, shelters must provide an environment that is conducive to maintaining animal health. Our current shelter does not meet this requirement. The current facility lacks proper isolation rooms to prevent the spread of infectious diseases, the ability to clean and disinfect due to the lack of non-porous surfaces. Granted, the shelter is made out of concrete, but it has a skim coat on it that is rapidly deteriorating. Proper heating, ventilation, and air quality. The American Medical, American Veterinary Medical Association recommends that ambient temperature should be kept above 60 degrees and below 80 degrees. As a volunteer, especially in the summer, the shelter temperatures routinely exceed 95 degrees in the kennel facility. We have fans, but as you know, in hot weather, fans do nothing but blow hot air. They also recommend that there are 10 to 20 full air exchanges every hour to reduce the spread of infectious diseases. We don't have that capability. Proper lighting. Natural light must be used and artificial light should closely proximate artificial light. We have fluorescent lights running down the center of both aisles currently. Another large issue is sound control. The kennels are so noisy when all of the animals are barking that it's essentially hazardous to your hearing. You have to wear earplugs. The noise is so loud, it discourages potential adopters as they walk down the middle of the aisle. They can't stand the noise. On good days, we tell people to walk outside and look on the outside of the kennels, but in inclement weather, that's not possible. So that reduces more potential adopters. Another extreme disadvantage of all the noise is it creates what we call animals that are kennel crazy because of the constant exposure to the noise. Sometimes we can take an animal and put it in an acquired environment and that helps, but other times, the animal ends up euthanized. Aside from the items I just mentioned, there are other factors that drive the need for a new shelter, not a remodeling of the existing facility. There's no sanitary sewer connection and the septic system on site is overtaxed. There's no water connection. All the water at the shelter is currently via a well, which has to be pre-treated for use. The sewer drains in the current facility are all undersized and to replace those drains would require cutting open the concrete in the entire kennel facility. That would displace animals and reduce their available capacity. The opening in the kennel floor could also compromise the current in-ground floor heating system. The concrete skim coat, as I mentioned earlier, is crumbling due to constant exposure. Anchors holding the fencing in front and back of each of the dog runs are falling out. Animals, we've already had animals escape because they just pushed the fencing out. As you know, the current site floods. After a heavy rain, there's no place to walk animals because the site is flooded. And some of that flooding can be remediated, but the shelter site is still surrounded by a marsh. And access to the site will be challenging after the, during the widening of Highway 17. Another issue is the impact on the staff of the current facility. Because the facility takes longer and longer to clean, they spend more time cleaning than doing anything else.
Mr. McDougal.
Sir.
Your five minutes has elapsed, so if you want to finish up?
I have one, let me say one thing, sir, and I'll be out of here. And I, and it's just, I would like to just basically say, for all of us, and it was mentioned during the invocation, to be civil, the comments that are directed online to the, to the staff of the animal control facility, calling them murderers and killers, that doesn't help anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the third speaker for tonight is Rachel Thompson. Rachel, you here? Okay, step up and state your name for the record, please.
Rachel Thompson, Executive Director, Glen Environmental Coalition. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. As you may have heard, last night, the City of Brunswick Commissioners unanimously voted on a joint resolution regarding the LCP Chemical Superfund Site proposed plan, sending that resolution to the EPA. If I had more than five minutes, I would dive into the elaborate technical details of the concerns that's outlined in that resolution that were identified by our technical advisor, but I want to just give you a synopsis of some of those concerns. The main concerns that were addressed or are addressed in the joint resolution are the residual contamination that remains at the site. That's mercury PCBs, lead, polyaromatic hydrocarbons, which are carcinogens. The residual contamination at the site was recommended to be addressed by the ATSDR, which is the arm of the CDC that oversees superfund site cleanups, which is contradictory to the human health assessment that was included in the EPA's plans. The EPA only outlined one alternative in their proposed plan, which is no further action. This is contrary to other sites in Glen County. For example, Terry Creek in 2015, when the proposed plan was released for that site, they offered more than five alternatives, some of which had alternative subsections. So for example, it was 7A, 7B, etc. So in this case, we only have one alternative to choose from. And lastly, in that resolution, it also encourages our state delegation and our federal delegation to submit letters to the EPA as well. And I can tell you that I've been working with Carter, Congressman Carter, and Senator Isaacson in Purdue's offices, and they are willing and ready to send letters supporting whatever your decision is today. You're probably wondering why I'm talking about the EPA. I'm here to request that you do add an item to the agenda to consider that resolution for be, to be passed this evening. And I have been working with the city and the county attorney on that resolution to get it ready for you guys here today. I can't express how important it is. There are only a few opportunities in the superfund remediation process for our community's voice to be heard. And so I'm really advocating for you guys to take advantage of this opportunity today and follow suit with the city commissioners who again unanimously voted in support of this joint resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to add item 13 to the agenda to consider adopting a joint resolution with the City of Brunswick rejecting the proposed plan for operable unit three of the LCP Chemical Superfund Site Uplands urging the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, and Honeywell to reconsider the selected preferred remedy set forth in the proposed plan and for other purposes.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion on the table. Whoever's any second. Commissioners, we have a motion on table any second. Okay, the motion, motion fails because it didn't get a second. So. All right, public, public hearing. Alcoholic beverage license. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position at a time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Item one, consider the issuance of a 2020 alcoholic beverage license to Maytee Cruz for Chili Peppers LLC DBA, Sea Salt Healthy Kitchen, 130 Retreat Plaza, St. Simon's Island, Georgia. The license is to sell malt beverages and wines for consumption on premise of a restaurant. No Sunday sales. Maydees Cruz, license C. Captain Tom Jump?
Ms. Cruz, are you here? Are you standing, please? The application is in compliance. There are no issues with this.
Okay. Yeah, we just need to make sure that the chief says everything's okay and that you're here. We just want to be sure that you're here. So it is a public hearing, so in fact, first off, commissioners, y'all have any questions of Captain Jump? Okay, we're going to open a public hearing. All those who support the application, if you'll step up to the podium and... Anyone want to come up and support the application? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move to, oh, well, we do have someone wants to, just step up, if you will, and state your name, please, sir, for the record.
Thank you. My name is Philip Driscoll, 25-year resident of Glen County. I've had the pleasure of knowing Ms. Cruz for the last 20 years. And I've known her as a friend and a business associate. And I would just like to support her in any way possible, especially in the sense that she has ongoing business establishments that are fully functional and well-respected in the community at this point in time. And this is just a further extension of her business enterprise. And I'd just like to support her and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to come up and speak in favor? Okay. Okay, seeing none, hearing none. Anyone opposed to the application? If you will step up to the mic. Anyone opposed to the application? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close this public hearing on this application. And commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. Are we asking questions or making motions?
You're going to ask questions?
Let me make a statement. I have eaten at the Sea Salt Healthy Kitchen and it's fabulous.
Thank you so much.
Not only is it fabulous, I think it's healthy. As a former heart surgeon, I'm hoping that it is, but it sure struck me as tasty and healthy. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for the 2020 alcoholic beverage license to Mrs. Maydees Cruz for Sea Salt Healthy Restaurant at 130 Retreat Plaza.
Second.
Commissioners, we have a motion second on the floor. Any further discussion? I call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. You got it.
We accept, we accept catering to the diocese.
Thank you so much.
Just for your information.
Thank you. Item two, consider the issuance of a 2020 alcoholic beverage license to Lance Williams for Williams Restaurant Group LLC DBA Mallory Street Cafe, 408 Mallory Street, St. Simon's Island, Georgia. The license is to sell distilled spirits, malt beverages, and wines for consumption on premise of a restaurant. Sunday sales permitted. Lance Williams, license C. Captain Jump?
Lance Williams, are you present? Would you please stand? Okay. There are new issues with this application and everything's in compliance.
Okay. Any questions of the chief?
I do. Just a technical question. Chief Jump, the previous one was no Sunday sales and this is Sunday sales.
Chief Jump, the previous one was no Sunday sales, and this is Sunday sales. Is there some distinction to be made there? One wanted it and one didn't want it, or what's the issue?
She's closed on Sundays.
Okay. And you're not?
I'm open every day.
Got it. Okay. That's the technical issue. She's not open.
Okay, we're good. We can move on with the public hearing portion. Anyone in favor of the application, if you'll step up to the podium? Yeah, state your name. State your name for the record.
My name's Lance Williams. I'm in favor.
Well, that helps. That helps. Okay. Anyone else in favor besides the guy asking for the application? Okay. I mean, you want to speak? Well, you...
Yeah, you speak.
You're good.
Okay. My name is Anna Williams. I'm his daughter, and I'm in favor because he has worked since he was very young in restaurants that serve alcoholic beverages, and I think he is really responsible, and he deserves it.
Okay. Well, there you go. Anyone else want to speak in favor of Mr. Williams, whether you're akin to him or not? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. Anyone opposed to the application wants to get up and speak? Anyone opposed to the application? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of it. And Commissioners, this is in your court.
I would like to again celebrate another wonderful St. Simon's Restaurant, and I'm all in favor of having another great eatery right around the corner for so many of us live. And so, I would like to make a motion to issue the 2020 alcoholic beverage license to Mr. Williams for the Williams Restaurant Group doing businesses at Mallory Street Cafe at 408 Mallory Street.
Second. Commissioners, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? There being none, I call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, and congratulations, Ms. Williams. Public hearing land use. Same rules apply as far as the people speaking in favor or against. Item 3, ZM 4064, Lake Marian subdivision. Consider a request to rezone all lots within the Lake Marian subdivision from planned Case number ZM-2007-02 to forest agricultural with conditions limiting uses. The rezone would allow non-commercial agricultural use, such as the keeping of a limited number of horses and livestock on all lots within the Lake Marian subdivision. The 89.93-acre Lake Marian subdivision is located approximately 1 mile north of the Camden County-Glen County line and is to the east of U.S. Highway 17. Melinda Bruley White, the Ligon Firm agent for Donna Gowan Poe and Howard A. Poe, applicants. All owners of lots within Lake Marian subdivision have authorized the agent and applicants to submit this application.
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZM 4064, Lake Marian rezone. This is the entire property of the Lake Marian subdivision. And as the chairman stated, all owners within the property are applicants and in favor of this. So, some of the lots have been developed out in Lake Marian. There's still several vacant lots. Currently, the zoning is planned development, and they are proposing to do forest agricultural with some conditions limiting the uses on the site. And it is single-family residential, and the comprehensive land use is... future land use is low-density residential. So, you may recall this project from about a year ago. The same applicants had come before the Mainland Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners requesting an amendment to the planned development at that time. So, at that time, they were interested in having livestock on the property and keeping the PD designation but amending it to allow that. And they did have a couple meetings before the Board of Commissioners, and the Commissioners had deferred it. And then eventually, a couple months later, they did end up withdrawing the application and just kind of holding off for a little while and deciding what they might want to do. And so, they have come... So, they're coming before you again at this time, and instead of amending the PD, they are looking to rezone back to conventional zoning of FA. So, the property had been forest agricultural since the zoning maps had been adopted in the '60s, and 2007 was when the property was rezoned to planned development for the purpose of the subdivision. So, this is the property here. This is all of Lake Marian. And so, it's primarily residential in the vicinity, but there is some other forest agricultural, including Fox Creek subdivision just to the north is forest agricultural. And here's an aerial that shows the property. And this is Marian or Lake Marian Drive or Marian Lake Drive that comes off of Highway 17 into the subdivision. And this is a future land use map. It does show it as low-density residential, so a rezone to FA would keep it low-density residential. So, there's no need for a change to the land use map if this rezone were approved. So, the Mainland Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 1st of 2019, and they did unanimously recommend approval of this rezone. We had one Commissioner absent that evening. So, some of the discussion during that meeting was around some of your concerns you had about a year ago when this application or similar application wasn't before you, was just how does it impact the neighbors, whether they're zoned FA or not? They've been living next to a property that has been PD for a number of years, and so how are they impacted? And then, you know, how would, you know, future residents of the subdivision, you know, feel about livestock in that area? So, they... The Planning Commission came up with a few conditions that they added to the recommendation. The first is commercial uses are prohibited, with the exception of customary home occupations established under Section 608 of the Glen County zoning ordinance. And the idea behind that is that there could not be any kind of commercial agriculture at all. So, there would be no commercial chicken farm or pig farm. It would only be, you know, domestic uses. So, the second condition would be a 30-foot-wide natural or planted buffer maintained on the lots that are adjacent to the neighboring subdivisions. And so, that would help just to buffer noise and visual from the agricultural uses. And the third one is they added only domesticated livestock that are pets are allowed to be kept in the property, then no roosters and no livestock for commercial purposes. So, just reiterating, no commercial livestock and no roosters, since they tend to be the noisiest of the livestock. And there was a lot of discussion about what kind of livestock, how to define domesticated. So, they came up with this terminology. I have since talked to University of Georgia Extension about, you know, what would be the most, I guess, the best terminology to call pet livestock versus commercial livestock. So, I suggested a small change to your possible actions tonight. So, here are your possible actions. And then, the recommended motion is to approve this rezone with the first two conditions are the same as what the Mainland Planning Commission. The third one, actually, in your staff report, I had said only domesticated equine and poultry are allowed to be kept in the property. But I have since talked to the applicant's agent, and they said there could be a potential interest in having a pet goat in the future, and so equine would not include the goats. So, I changed it to domesticated livestock. So, that is what is before you tonight, is the condition is domesticated livestock to include really all livestock, except for roosters. So, with that, I have to answer any questions. And Melinda Bruley White is here representing the applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Poe.
Stephanie, thank you. Please hang around there for a minute. Commissioners, y'all have any questions, Stephanie?
Okay. I do have a question. Go over the livestock issue again. Is there any... Anything that's excluded when you say domesticated livestock? I mean, do you have any other exclusions other than what you've listed?
So, when I talked to University of Georgia Extension, I talked to the local extension agent here, and, you know, he had specified, you know, kind of breaking it down to domesticated equine, small ruminants, which would be goat and sheep, or poultry, which would be, you know, chickens and geese. So, those are really the terminologies. So, livestock really is all-encompassing, so there really would not be any exclusions that I'm aware of with that. And so, really, the only thing would be they would not be used for commercial purposes and the no roosters, but it would be much more inclusive.
If you have a rooster and you don't intend to sell him, then he's not a commercial rooster?
That is... I think that is true, yes. He does not have a commercial purpose.
Yeah. Okay. Can we add something to that that says that the Board of Commissioners will never be asked to referee any potential arguments? You know, that somebody says their pet is a pet... Their pig is a pet, and it's not a... You know, that is a pet and is domesticated because... Look, I'm going to vote for this. I just won't... I'm going to vote for this. But, you know, people read ordinance as way they want to, and then we find ourselves stuck with...
I have one question, Stephanie. Well, this includes snakes as a pet?
No, it would not. Not that I'm aware of. I think that would be more wildlife, not livestock.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing, and thank you, Stephanie. And I'm going to open the floor to those that are in favor, if you'll step up to the mic and state your name.
Yes, sir. You've seen us here before. My name's Melinda Bruley White. I'm with the Ligon Firm, and this is Ms. Donna Gowan Poe, and we were trying to figure out some terminology that might narrow the livestock definition. And I believe one of the Mainland Planning Commission officers suggested domesticated livestock, she liked kept as pets. So, probably snakes are wildlife, and more than one pig or two pigs not pets, and no one cares about having a rooster. So, what we'd like to do is return to that forest agricultural zoning that this property existed, you know, in that status for so long until 2007. She's helping me out here, but it's true that the adjoining neighborhood, Fox Creek, is still forest agricultural, and it's governed by a declaration, and there are no limitations on that declaration. So, if they felt like it tomorrow, they could amend their declaration to do whatever the heck they wanted to with livestock or the property within the forest agricultural designation. So, we're willing, in order to be able to return to that, to accept the limitation and also to expand the buffer for those adjoining neighborhoods. The buffer was 25 in the planned development text, and we're recommending or agreeing to the recommendation of 30 feet on the, you know, to provide an additional buffer.
Appreciate that. We're going to ask for others that may want to come up and speak in favor.
Yes, sir.
So, if there's anyone else who wants to come up and speak in favor? And y'all...
I will. I would just like to say that we've done a year-long circle, very expensive to me, to get back to kind of what I wanted to start with, which was just to have horses and ponies for my grandbabies. We have our children out there, and we are trying to just take it back to FA, just like the northern subdivision is, where we will have more restrictions. And I have no problem with no roosters. There will be no pigs on my property, and if I see a snake, it's dead.
Well, Ms. Poe, I mean, I remember the conversation we had some time ago, and I was okay if you guys wanted to move ahead. I just... I was not really sure you all realized what you were getting in.
Y'all were being protective of my property, and I appreciate it because there were other people there, and I appreciate what you did very much.
Yeah, but we have other areas that are already FA, and I don't know if folks are getting the declarations when they... Somebody's telling them that you're buying this lot, and there's somebody that got goats over there, and they're noisy, and they move in there, and then they call me up and say, "Somebody got a goat out here, and this is where residential neighborhood." Well, it's FA, buddy. You know, we can't do anything about it.
And these are larger lots. The minimum lot size is 2.75 acres. The lot I'm on is almost 5 acres. And there will not... There's 17 lots out there, but I built in the middle of three. So, this will never be a very big subdivision. I actually control four.
Yeah. Well, I think y'all have done a lot of work on this to try to get it where it'd make it easier for you going down. My only thing is, in the world we live in today, I don't care what you got written down, somebody is going to say it doesn't mean what they all voted on. It means something different.
I agree. I agree with you 100%.
But I'm good with it. So, okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak in favor of the application? Ms. Putty?
I want to speak in favor of allowing some livestock, but I think it is incumbent upon you to decide what livestock. In some places, alligators are livestock, swine, pigs, hogs, peacocks. If you want to have a noisy bird in the neighborhood, get a peacock, et cetera. So, I suggest that you ask the applicants to agree to or agree with you to specific kinds and perhaps some numbers. One goat or one sheep can be nice, but a herd of goats, a herd of sheep as pets might not be. And what is this opposition to snakes? Snakes are very useful creatures. I always enjoy seeing snakes come into my koi pond to eat my fish, et cetera. Snakes are fun to have around. They're useful, except for moccasins and rattlesnakes. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Anyone else wanting to speak in favor? Okay, we're going to close the in-favor part and move to the... Those that are not in favor. Anyone not in favor of the application, if you would step up to the podium?
Julian Smith again.
I expect no less.
Julian Smith again. I am opposed to the forest agriculture designation itself, zoning district. I hope that the county commission will look favorably upon any recommendation that comes from the TSW consultants on the revision of the accounting zoning ordinance and development regulations to eliminate forest agriculture. Yes, forestry is an important use, and so is agriculture. But once you change this property to forest agriculture, all kinds of other things can happen. So, I really don't see why there is not simply a conditional use within the current zoning, this planned development, or an amendment to the planned development. I just have no opposition to some domesticated animals, but I think you should be careful about the ones that other neighbors might not want to have or see, such as herds of swine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak against? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we're going to close the public portion, public hearing portion, and Commissioners? portion. And commissioners, have any questions, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Smith's gonna be shocked, but I agree with him. I hate to see things, I hate to see things go back to forest agriculture. I think it's the most invasive zoning we have. But having said that, if no other commissioners have got any comments, I'm gonna move to approve applications. ZM 4064, subject to the following conditions. Commercial uses are permitted with the exception of customary home occupations established under the regulations of Section 608 Glen County zoning ordinance. A 30-foot wide natural appointed buffers will be maintained on lots 8, 9, lots 1 and 17 adjacent to the neighboring subdivisions. And all the domesticated livestock, whether that includes snakes or not, are allowed to be kept on the property. No roosters or no livestock for commercial purposes are allowed.
Second.
Second.
Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yeah, I would, I agree with Mr. Smith and Mr. Commissioner Brunson. You know, going back to forest agriculture.
Well, in light of where this is, you know, reluctantly.
Yeah. If you stay on top of, you know, what you want to do out there, and make sure everybody that moves in really understands if they're buying lots. But again, the problem I find is people move into areas that are forest, Satilla Shores is a good example. A lot of that's forest agriculture, but if you drive through there, you'll think it's residential. Okay? And people, there's things people can do in a residential area that is forest agriculture that most people living there don't realize they can do. And if they, when these things pop up, it creates a lot of issues for people. Okay, that being said, got a motion, second on the table. All those in favor, signal five, or raise your right hand. That is unanimous. You got it. Took you a while, but you got it. All right, thank you. Item four, consider a request to amend Envision Glen. Glen County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map from Low Density Residential to Commercial in regard to a 15.65 acre property located at 3600 Highway 82. Current zoning is forest agriculture and local commercial. Proposed zoning is highway commercial. Case number ZM 4010. The applicant desires to establish a new heavy equipment retail and service business on the property. Parcel ID 02-00513. Chris Amos, CSEC Incorporated Agent for Chris Cannon, Flint Equipment Company, applicant and P.E. Drawdy Jr., and Margaret F. Snow, owners. Steffi?
Thank you. So there are two applications on your agenda tonight for the Flint Equipment Company site. The first is ZM 4010, the request to amend the future land use map. So, as you're aware, the comprehensive plan was updated in October of 2018. So we've been utilizing it just a little over a year now. And in that document, there is a future land use map. And for this particular property, this area is shown as low density residential. And in our, our planning reviews and the criteria that we use for rezones, one of the standards of evaluation is compliance with the comprehensive plan. So when this application came into our department, we looked at the future land use map and noticed that it did not indicate commercial, as the application was looking to do. So we did ask them to specifically request an amendment to the future land use map and submit an application for that. So that is what this first item is. So they are looking to change the map from low density residential to commercial for this particular 15.65 acre property located at 3600 Highway 82. The current zoning is, it's split zone forest agriculture and local commercial, and they are proposing to do highway commercial. So the rezone piece will be in your second application, you'll hear, and this will just be for the future land use map. And so the, what they are looking to do is to do a retail and service of heavy equipment, the Flint Equipment Company. So here is the property where the star is located. This is Highway 82 heading west. The property is primarily forest agricultural. The parcel actually does cross the railroad tracks in this location too. And then this little corner right here is a local commercial. Gary Lee's Meat Market is just to the west, adjacent, and they are local commercial as well. So right now, the property is primarily undeveloped. There's a billboard on the property, but it's an undeveloped piece. So this is the future land use map that is currently in the comprehensive plan. So just to orient you, here is the exit 29 interchange with I-95. So the red area is all commercial in the future land use map. So what we had looked at was, it is primarily concentrated around the interchange. And as you start heading west of 82, the land use does, does begin to shift to a more rural, rural use. And so that is what we start to see as we head out 82. So all of this area is low density residential, really, until you get out towards the Brantley County line. And here is the property right here. So this is a proposed for Flint Equipment Company site. So this is, is this a sketch plan, a conceptual plan that they have included to show what would be on the site? So here is where their building would be located. They would have outdoor storage of their equipment, both for showcase, and then equipment that might be coming in for service would also be on the site. And so they do, they have included on their site plan that they would include a significant buffer around the property that would help buffer visually and noise as well. So the Mainland Planning Commission held a duly notice public hearing on October 1st, 2019, to consider this future land use map amendment. And the vote was 4-2, with Commissioner Williams absent that evening, to recommend denial of the future land use map amendment request. So some of the considerations that they had looked at was that the property does have commercial uses as currently zoned. There is some local commercial that's currently on the property. There is a very, pretty hard line, it looks like, between where the commercial really ends around the interchange, and then where the rural area begins. And so really, no, there, really west of I-95, exit 29 interchange, there are limited properties as you head out that are zoned highway commercial. And so it does seem that the low density and the lighter commercial uses, that's been a pretty preserved use out in this western West Glen area. And then the 2018 comprehensive future land use map indicates it should retain a residential character. So here are your possible motions tonight, is to approve the future land use map amendment as presented, approve it with modifications or conditions, defer action, and/or deny the future land use map amendment. And just so, so there would be a public hearing for this item. And just so you're aware, our direction from Department of Community Affairs is that even if, regardless of what your decision is on this, it is recommended to have the next hearing on the rezone as well. So that is, that's all I have at this point. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, got any questions for Steffi?
Stephanie, so is, the only commercial in that area is Gary Lee's?
There is also... Let's go back to the map. This doesn't show it very well. So in this property, yeah, there is actually a local commercial use across the way, across 82. And then there's Gary Lee's. The property, so the property east of the site is part of the Majestic Oaks Plan Development. And so the residential for Majestic Oaks has been developed, is further down here. But in the plan development, they do include some commercial uses along 82. I did look at the uses that are specified in the PD, and they are primarily local commercial, neighborhood commercial uses. So I did not see that there was anything that, that would be closer to general commercial, highway commercial, because I did evaluate that to see, is this appropriate with what's next door? And, but it is, it is local commercial and neighborhood commercial related uses.
And we're talking about big, large equipment?
Yes, sir.
Tractors or those kind of things?
Right. So farm equipment, construction equipment.
Stephanie, I have a question. Why would we amend the map first before we heard the rezoning request?
That is a good question. And this project is actually the, I don't know if it's the first time in the history of rezones for the county, but the first time, at least since we've, since I've been here the last couple of years, that we have done it this way. And primarily because this, you know, our comprehensive plan was just recently adopted. So, you know, our stance on that is, we don't want it to be a plan that sits on the shelf. We want it to be in active use with all of our planning projects that we're using. And then there is a standard of evaluation in your rezone, in the rezone criteria in our zoning code, that does speak to compliance with the comprehensive plan. And so, you know, if they just came forward with the rezone without taking this step, there would be no way for, you know, for anyone to find that there's compliance, because it's commercial in a low density residential. So the best way to get compliance is to really ask the county, you know, is this, is commercial something that you see happening out here? You know, are there, are there changing land uses? Are there other commercial entities in the area that suggests that the area really should be commercial? And so those are some of the considerations that you would look at to determine whether it's appropriate to, to change the map to commercial. So that is why we're doing it as a first step before the rezone.
I guess my question is, why wouldn't you do, go ahead and hear the rezoning first, wait and see what happens with that, and then, and then if it needs to be amended, then amend it? Are we making a decision here on the rezoning by either approving or denying the change of the future land use map?
Yeah, you, there's still other criteria in the rezone that you would consider. So by, you know, if your decision was that, yes, the land use map should be amended to commercial, it doesn't necessarily mean that you would have to also say the rezone should be approved. But it is one very significant indicator that if you found that this, you should be commercial land use, it's a real strong indicator that perhaps the rezone would be appropriate too. But with the rezone, you are looking at other criteria as well, that you would need to find that those are, those are met by the application.
Commissioners, anybody got any questions? Steffi?
Stephanie, I don't quite know how to wade into this, so I'm just gonna jump. When the applicant first came forward, what were they told from community development on whether or not this would be an acceptable use?
Sure. So I know, I had several meetings with the applicant's agent kind of early on. It's been a number of months since they first made the application. And so when we first looked at it, you know, kind of our initial conversation with folks is, you know, we'll, we'll do a little more research, you know, see what else has happened in the area. I know when we first met with, when I first met with applicant's agent, you know, what I wanted to look at was, what were the commercial uses allowed under the Majestic Oaks PD? You know, if they were highway commercial uses, and then that, that might give a lot more favor, you know, more favorable, favorable review to highway commercial uses next door. So, so I know, you know, I wanted to do more research on, you know, what was in the area. I know some of the conversation was, there was some thought that maybe this property had been initially zoned highway commercial a long time ago, and then rezoned. So that was something we, you know, looked at old files and old zoning maps to see historically what the zoning uses are. So we do a lot of that. But once I, once I determined that there really wasn't enough higher intensity commercial uses out that way, that's when I began talking with applicant's agent about, this is, this is gonna be hard for the staff to recommend, or hard for the staff to support. And it, I don't, it doesn't look like we're gonna be recommending approval of it, is how that conversation went.
And what kind of timeframe was that, from initial visit until you gave the staff recommendation, or what you thought the recommendation might be?
Well, the initial recommendation, I mean, in terms of what I would have put in writing, I mean, that recommendation would have been, we do our reviews through the, through N4. And so when I had done the review of their rezone application, that is when I put in there that it does not meet the future land use map, and that there were some issues with other commercial uses.
Can you give me the timeframe?
I'd have to look back at when the application was submitted, and when my N4 comment went in. And I, and I'll have to look back to see if I had some, you know, when the email correspondence was too. So I do not have that in front of me. But I could definitely look at that and have some, a better timeframe for you.
And when the future land use map was adopted, what kind of conversation did we have about this being more or less cast in stone versus it being breathable, that we could adapt it? I'm sure you're aware of the missing U email that, where she presented some counterpoints and things for consideration. Her understanding of how the map should be interpreted, and the timeframe that went into it. So I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get a little more information to make a more informed decision here. So what was the intent of the future land use map when it was adopted, and was it supposed to be a breathable document?
Right. No, that's a, that's a very good question. So, because that question has been asked of us, is that if my property isn't showing the exact land use that I want to do, does that mean, forget it, nothing can ever change? And that is, it is a breathable document. I mean, the entire comprehensive plan is, you know, is fluid, depending on some changing conditions, or if, you know, or if something was... So the other thing that we did with this, with this map was there, we had, we laid, we laid the parcel layer over the comprehensive plan future land use map. So, and so it's not really a parcel-by-parcel map like our zoning map is. So we did lay the parcel layer over it, just so people would have a better idea of where the properties were. So that being said, you know, if your property isn't exactly the land use you want, what we do is, we look, we look around it and say, well, you know, was, did the color just not really cover your parcel, but maybe that's an absolutely appropriate, you know, land use for that area? So we look at what's immediately around it. You know, so if this property had come in, and it was closer to the interchange, right next to a red area, then, you know, there's a good possibility that our recommendation would have been something different, saying that, you know, it's, it looks like that's an area that is changing, and it could, it could potentially be a different use. So it can be a changing document, but what we also look at is, you know, there was a lot of, you know, public comment that went into it. You know, for Highway 82, you know, what we've looked at is, you know, if we did a corridor study of Highway 82 in the future, and had a, you know, really significant look, and take the time to look at what Highway 82, you know, what we want it to be in the future, then, you know, that would be a real, you know, good indicator for us of what, how we should be treating any land use changes along that way. So if that answers your question, it can change, but...
Sort of, kinda, so...
Yeah. I mean, I, the trouble with this one was from, it's far from all of the other higher intensity commercial. So there wasn't enough in any of our planning documents to indicate to me that this area should be changing to commercial.
Thank you. Steffi, I guess I can ask a question or two. Didn't we just approve the future land use maps that we have now, a little over a year ago?
Yes, sir.
We also, and that was part of doing the comprehensive plan and heading into the zoning update. Okay. You know, there's been a lot of interaction between the community and Board of Commissioners and staff, you know, that the board hadn't been getting it right for many years in Glen County when it comes to applying zoning. I even heard, it was even in the paper, after that October meeting with the Mainland Planning Commission, well, why in the world worry about the flume maps? Because we never used them before. Well, maybe, maybe today is the day we need to start taking seriously what we take votes on. We took a vote in this chamber to approve those flume maps. I'm already hearing there's issues with them. But it may be. But today, in this moment, you know, those things are, I mean, the ink's not even dry on them. And we're being asked to kind of look the other way. That may not be a fair characterization, but, but would that not amount to almost spot zoning? I mean, if we have a future land use map that's calling that... I mean, if we have a future land use map that's calling that local commercial, not highway commercial, and we're faced with, if we change that, then changing the zoning based on that, is it gonna change all the other parcels around there too? So, we've opened all that up, but for this purpose tonight, that would be really, you're talking about spot zoning on a larger scale, to be honest. And I was asked by the applicant to, you know, if I could tell them what I was gonna be doing here tonight. Some time ago, they've been talking to me and all, and, you know, we get calls, Commissioner gets called, we get called, people, lobbyists, and I told them I wasn't gonna be able to support it. If there was an overriding...if there was a larger impact for that particular type business to be there, that would...that with the zoning that's in place today, if it rose to such a level, you know, that it was in the greater interest of the community, the larger community to do that, I can see we're gonna have exceptions sometimes, but I just...I haven't been able to convince myself that this type of business there is gonna have that great of an impact overall to the overall community that we live in, that I can go there and change a zoning map. And so, you know, and here we...I mean, we're right in the middle of rewriting our zoning. And what does it say about that whole effort if we're not gonna be serious about the flume maps that are only a year old? So, I just want to have some clarification there. That's what we're talking about, correct? That's what we're talking about. So, okay. Thank you, Steffi. Anyone else before we open this up to public hearing? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to echo, well, say something. I'm very familiar with this area. My wife grew up out there, and I... My wife grew up out there, so I'm very familiar with the area. And I was trying to picture this development on the way out there and how it might change the feel of the neighborhood, or what I see that's coming out there. And I was a part of building some affordable houses out that way, so very, very familiar with the neighborhoods out there. And I just...I just don't see it.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're going to get into the public hearing portion, so anyone wants to speak in favor of the application, if they'll step forward to the podium and state your name, please, for the record.
My name's Chris Amos. I'm an engineer here in Brunswick with CSCC Incorporated, and I'm the agent for this project, and have been working with the owner to try to develop a plan that we could get approved. We all know that we've had a future land use map for a long time. That was one of the documents that was looked at previously. I've done rezonings in Glen County for the last 25 years. Most of the projects that I've worked on had to have a future land use map amendment. So, there's a couple of things I want to talk about with the future land use map, that some specific things in this project and some general things as well. And I'm gonna address the general things first, because I actually think they're extremely important to the community, not just for this project. So, we've got Highway 82, a major arterial road that's connecting Glen County, points west of Glen County, to the port, to I-95, to US-17, to all of the other major transportation corridors that we have in the community. If we can't, in addition to the highway, we have a good portion of the highway has a rail line running parallel to the highway. I've worked with a lot of industrial developers over the last few years. I know when they're looking at trying to...it specifically looked in this particular area, trying to locate industries here and up 341 as well, and it was because of the rail access. If you look at the rail accessible property in Glen County, there isn't much. And now, based on the future land use map, virtually all of it is designated as low-density residential. And if somebody comes to town to want to do an industrial project to bring employment to the community, then we're gonna have to deal with the future land use map amendment. I've worked in other communities where we had future land use maps that were seriously considered and part of the process, and amending it was something that you would have to do based frequently on the arguments of the zoning. So, to your point, Commissioner, about hearing this item before the rezoning, it does, I think, make it a little more difficult for us to present an argument, because we're trying to present a general argument about the inviolability of a future land use map without even hearing the specifics of the project first. But one thing that I would like to show you, specific to the project... Well, let's start out with this one first. The big green area that's up, right there, that's a 900-acre industrial park that I rezoned in 2011. It was originally residential. It was rezoned to planned development general with nothing but commercial and industrial uses. As a result of that industrial park, we were able to get the elevated water storage tank and the water production facility that's on Ratcliffe Road put together with donations from the landowner so that we could get that water system constructed in that area. And the intent of putting that water system in was to be able to provide water and eventually sewer to that whole area of 82. The arterial nature of that road was a huge factor in considering where...how to rezone that and where to put that project. This is the current zoning around this project site. Majestic Oaks is that area that's right in the center. The lighter purple colors on that map show up as low-density residential on the future land use map. They're all highway commercial. The darker purple areas are local commercial. The green areas, including all of the next phase of Majestic Oaks, is a planned development that has 20 acres of commercial uses. It's not highway commercial, but it is commercial. The reason that we were asking to zone to highway commercial related to the difficulty of getting...this project could be located in either a highway commercial zone or in a general commercial zone with a conditional use permit. We had no objection to the general commercial. The highway commercial seemed like the best route to take at the time that we were filing the application. So, every bit of that that's shown in the green is, in fact, commercially developable property, or a good portion of that is commercially developable property. On the other end of this site, we've got local commercial. We are at the very beginning of the future land use map designation for low-density residential. Moving the boundary to the other, to incorporate the Flint equipment outside of that...outside of the low-density residential, in my opinion, our opinion, is not a significant change to the map. And I guess it's difficult to do all of this without being able to talk about the rezoning. And I know in other communities that I've worked in, we've had a vote on the future land use map contingent upon the rezoning being approved. We've also had the future land use map amendment presentation made, and then the rezoning presentation made, and then had votes on both of them after both of the presentations were made. I don't know if that would help you understand the project any better if we did it that way.
Mr. Amos, you talk about commercial and...but local commercial, Steffi, I'm way over my head here, but local commercial is intended to support residential. I mean, it's your Dollar General store, it's your strip shopping center, but it is there to support residential. There's a huge difference in local commercial and highway commercial.
There is a big difference, yes, sir. I agree with that.
And so...
But the thing that I keep coming back to is that if we can't...if we're not gonna be able to locate...so, we've got all of 341 now basically in a low-density residential zoning. We've got all of that 82 corridor in a low-density residential zoning. If we can't do commercial development on those two corridors, then where can we do it in Glen County? So, I understand the future land use map is new. I also understand that they get amended in other places all the time, and what we're asking for you to do is to consider the totality of the project rather than just the overarching issue of the future land use map that has just been adopted last year.
Well, if we approve this to highway commercial, can you guarantee to me that somebody else won't...is not gonna come in here in any of that green you got up there and say, hey, I want highway commercial to put in something that is really gets way above and beyond local commercial?
Well, no, sir, I can't, but there's a whole other zoning process that deals with those typical issues, and that's normally what we're dealing with. Traffic, visual impact, noise, adjacent properties, and how they are gonna be affected by the project. That's normally what we're dealing with in a rezoning. The future land use map issue isn't normally the thing that we have to base our zoning request on.
I think it opens the door up for...I mean, that's the place to be out there. I mean, that's one of the places to be, that place out there and Exit 38, all up and down the spur there. And, you know, I'm not sure what the zoning is. What's the grocery store going up at Sterling? Is that local commercial or is that highway commercial? Is it? I think it's the Satilla...
I don't know.
Satilla Grocery? But that's on 341, but I was just curious.
Yeah, I have to double-check that. I'm not sure offhand if it's general commercial or highway commercial up there. I can look that up.
Well, I just think there's probably a lot of people have looked at that before they ever come to us, we never heard from them, that wanted to do some highway commercial and saw that it wasn't highway commercial, so we just never heard from them. I think if we open this door up, we're gonna hear from more people, and it just puts us in a pretty bad position. I don't mind being in a bad position, but with this, you know, with everything we're going through now, I think it's...
My last point would be that the future land use map was developed by the...for the county as a whole. There was no way to look and zero in on every single area of the county and make actual decisions and determinations about how that was going to develop, because it was too broad a brush. I believe Missy addressed that at the meeting pretty thoroughly, and I believe her email addressed that pretty thoroughly as well, is that this was one of the areas of the county that they were concerned that the low-density residential designation for this may not be appropriate, given the nature of the highway and the rail access and the other things along that corridor.
Well, I mean, there's a...I have to say, if it was, you know, all highway commercial things that might could go there, you know, maybe acceptable to most of us in this room.
We have no objection to downzoning this...to zoning this to general commercial with a conditional use permit either.
Yeah, it's kind of...
I don't know that we can do that at this meeting tonight.
You can do a lot of what you want to do, and I'm not advocating it, but I'm just saying, let's see what's...this zoning stuff, you know, apparently everything except doing new sales would be covered, you know, in local commercial. Is that right, Steffi?
I don't think so.
Huh? If you're just doing mechanic work in there, is that local commercial?
So, is local commercial...no, that would not be. So, yeah, primarily the outdoor sales and the repair. Now, they were just doing indoor sales of other items, that could be local commercial, but heavy equipment is not one of the goods listed that could be sold in local commercial. So, there's a variety of aspects of this that they could not be able to do in a local commercial. And you asked a question about Satilla Grocery, and that is a highway commercial site on 341.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought. So, if you're in a grocery store, can a grocery store go into...well, I guess it could, if it's local commercial?
Yes, I believe so.
Grocery store can go in local commercial, right?
Yes, I believe that's true.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, well, I...Reese asked about that, just for the people that live in out that area. If you had a grocery store, and I'm not trying to make a case for this, your business company here, but just the arguments about the traffic, you know, a grocery store can go in there. You're probably gonna have more traffic if a grocery store shows up.
Significantly more.
Than you ever gonna have with...I mean, they're not gonna have a whole lot of people showing up to buy doggone equipment every day. And I'm not trying to make a case, I'm just saying that that's...
Ten bucks a day.
That's the irony, or if you will, of our zoning. And, you know, St. Simons, we got folks on St. Simons complaining about an event venue that had been operating for a little while in an area that's zoned for 36 residences. Is that right? I think we do. And they're against the people having events there on...or some of them are. But, yes, what do you want? You want this or you want that? But...
I would just would like to ask you to consider that a large part of the property in this area is already inconsistent with the future land use map. And what we're asking to do is to take a piece in the middle that's bounded by commercial property and reconsider having that designated as low-density residential.
Okay, Chris.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of the application? Come up podium, state your name, please. Anyone else want to come up and speak in favor? Okay, if not, anyone opposed to the application? Come up to the podium. Hold, 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 hold. Are you opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, all right. Well, this gentleman, this spry young man beat you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Mr. Amos and the applicant for bringing this issue before you, because it's something I think that needs to be talked about in a very broad way. And I want to thank Commissioner Neal for his comments. The flume map, the one that was adopted recently, is full of booby traps. And I'll give you an example. Last year, someone came forward with an application for a commercial venue right next to a residential neighborhood, and because the staff report said that the future land use map says this should be commercial. At a later meeting of the MPC, someone came forward to put a concrete plant next to low-density residential out in your district, Commissioner Browning. But the staff report did not say anything, did not say anything about the flume. And interestingly enough, I looked at the flume for this parcel where somebody wanted to have and did get permission to have a concrete plant, and it was...the flume proposed it would be low-density development. So, there's an example of the booby trap. All right. I think the flume that you all adopted last year or the year before needs to be reviewed by the two planning commissions. I don't think it was before it was adopted. It was based on recommendations from consultants... It was based on recommendations from consultants. And my experience in local government elsewhere is that when a governing body or when the administrator or the manager for that county or that city or that town wants to get something done quickly, bloodlessly, silently, you hire a consultant, so you can always blame the consultant. But I think we need to look at the flum. And I'm going to give you one more example. And I'm not giving this example because it has to do with a piece of property I own, but here goes. I own a two-acre parcel that touches the historic canal. And interestingly enough, it's zoned forest agriculture. It immediately butts a residential development put in by Harry Drakers, I think it's Country Walk. Now, the flum shows my property, which is, is now forest agriculture, as being rezoned, as being zoned industrial. And it also shows three abutting, single-family properties to the north of me, industrial. They are right now, single-family residential and a planned development. So, these three lots, the flum says, "We should be industrial." Why? Because there is a suburban road that comes off of Harry Drakers Boulevard and meanders for about a half a mile to cul-de-sac with those three lots. Now, why does the flum propose that these three, single-family lots and my modest little two-acre lot, why should they be in the future, industrial? Because the county owns a big chunk of land on both sides of the canal that's close to the airport. So, I think somebody in economic development or maybe at the Airport Authority would like to see some industrial development. And again, why those three residential lots? Again, I say, access. Any flum that makes that kind of, of change, proposes that kind of thing, that is going to put industrial traffic coming through a suburban neighborhood, you, you've got to have somebody, some responsible, your responsible island and mainland planning commissions look at these, this new flum. Otherwise, it's going to be a bunch of flumery. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak again? Yes, sir.
My name is Ron Lewis, and I own the local commercial lot across from this proposal. I've got no objections for development of commercial, but I guess I'm probably up here on principle because I know, had I went down there to apply for local, for highway commercial on that lot, I would have been turned down. And everyone in this room would have been turned down because we would have been told this was against the proposal of the planned development. Has, has anyone asked these applicants to consider going across 95 where it's already property for sale? It's already been cleared? It's already been graded? I've, I've been in site preparation, and I know how much it costs. I, was that a, a proposal of, of the, of the planned development that Stephanie put on the, the map a while ago?
Yeah.
It, it shows a buffer of, of property on 82. Could, could we get Stephanie to pull that back up again, please?
Yes, sir.
It, it just, I wanted to know if this was an accurate rendition of what they were going to do on, on the property. And the reason for my question about it? Actually, if you approve this, it would increase my property value. It would help me. It, it, yes, I, that, that's, I don't see, is that, Mr. Amos, is that an accurate drawing of, of your proposal?
Yes, sir, this, this site plan was developed from a facility they just built in Macon, and it was just adapted to this site. There are a couple of things about this that I want to address when we get to the rezoning, but yes, sir, that is an accurate, that's an accurate map.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess my question is, it doesn't show that big drainage ditch that goes right in the middle of that property. And I don't know how we could overcome that. If, if this is supposed to be the proposal, it, it omitted the elephant in the room of the, the drainage ditch.
Since I'm standing here, can I address that?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
The, the big yellow hatch area on the south end of the property is where the drainage ditch is. And then there's a detention pond that will go between that drainage ditch and the site. And that detention pond that I've got shown there is very large to manage the stormwater quantity of stormwater runoff and the quality. But that ditch is in the southern end where that yellow, that yellow hatch section is.
Okay, okay. So, we're showing, regardless, my, my opposition is that it just, it just doesn't seem fair to go against what we just passed. And I don't live in Glen County. This will not affect me one bit, not one iota. But I just think that going across the road, they may have to spend a couple of hundred more thousand dollars, but they'll have more exposure because they get all the I-95 traffic going that way and all the traffic that's going by this property. I know that, I would hate to see all that, all that land cleared. I know if you develop in houses, you're going to clear some property, but it's going to be, it's not going to be scalped like that. That's pretty much all I've got to say about it, other than the fact that I know if you approve this, you will open the door, Mr. Chairman, to everybody that's got property on a highway, a four-lane highway, regardless of its zoning, they're going to want it highway commercial. And, and there's going to be lawsuit after lawsuit if you don't approve it. So, I, I just wanted to mention that, but again, this, this, this proposal would help me, and I know it don't make sense, but I'm just up here for principle because I know if any of us had, had came to the community development, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have got, certainly wouldn't have got three meetings here.
Mr. Lewis, appreciate your comments, thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
My name's Marion McGraw, and I'm a resident of Majestic Oaks. And this sort of addresses both issues because they're so intertwined, I didn't quite know how to separate them. If approved, the request to amend the envisioned Glen Plan to allow for highway commercial at the proposed Flint Equipment Company site could set a precedent for highway commercial all around Majestic Oaks. Bo Power Incorporated owns 19.88 acres of road frontage on Highway 82. This begins at the end of the entrance fence to Majestic Oaks and goes down to Spartan Development's narrow road frontage, which is adjacent to the proposed Flint Equipment Company site. Bo Power rezoned ZM4117 had initially requested that this 19.88 acres also be rezoned highway commercial, but they have presently deferred their request until a later date. Bo Power Incorporated also owns 33.45 acres from the Southern Retreat RV Park to the railroad tracks. This acreage has a very narrow road frontage on Highway 303. The only thing between the Majestic Oaks planned development land and this acreage is the long drainage canal. If the envisioned Glen Plan is amended to allow Flint to have highway commercial zoning, this could lead to extensive commercial development in front of and possibly behind Majestic Oaks if Bo Power continues to pursue using their nearby property for commercial development. There are some questions which need to be considered concerning these requests to amend envisioned Glen and rezon the proposed Flint Equipment Company site to highway commercial. Number one, will it comply with the envisioned Glen Plan, which shows this area is primarily low-density residential? Number two, will it set a precedent for even more commercial development all around Majestic Oaks and nearby residential neighborhoods? Number three, will it open the door for similar requests throughout Glen County to alter the very carefully developed envisioned Glen Plan? And number four, will it cause the people of Glen County to lose confidence and trust in our commissioners to use the envisioned Glen Plan when making decisions? Thank you for your time and attention to these comments. I respectfully ask you to deny these requests for amending envisioned Glen and the rezoning to highway commercial for Flint Equipment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. State your name for the record.
Good evening, gentlemen. Before I begin, my name's James Harden, I'm a resident at Majestic Oaks. Before I begin pursuant to ordinance 1107.1, Section F, I am requesting more than five minutes of time before I begin speaking.
I'll let the chairman address that, he's back.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, sure, but it's going to count against the 30 minutes, not, it, it just counts against the whole 30 minutes.
And I would also like to make a point of order and reclaim the opposition's time that was taken by the gentleman that actually spoke against the flum. We're in opposition to the flum amendment, and it appears from listening to the first gentleman speak, he was actually speaking in favor of the applicant, and I would like to reclaim that time.
Well, I'm just going to run the clock on you, and then we'll see where you get to.
All right, well, let's, okay, then I'm going to get right to it.
Now, now, look, part of the rules is, don't be repetitious. I mean, if you're going to say the same thing over and over, I'm going to body slam you.
No, I am not going to charge, I'm not going to charge by the word. I do want to address some things because every time I come to one of these meetings, there's something else, somebody says something that, that gets my attention and I want to address immediately. Commissioner Neal, this, the flum's not a living, breathing document, okay? It was a well-thought-out, well-funded, thoroughly investigated plan that laid out certain zones in certain areas, and we should adhere to it. It is amendable pursuant to Glen County ordinance. And pursuant to Glen County ordinance, your staff, your planning staff, made certain recommendations in their staff report to determine whether or not there should be an amendment, to determine whether or not there should be a modification, to determine whether the applicant should have been granted their waiver, their spot zoning, as the chairman rightfully pointed out. And every one of those points, every one of those items, the answer is no. Is it a benefit to the community? Is it consistent with the use? Has the traffic impact? Is it a detriment to the adjoining properties? Are there other properties available? The answers to all of those questions are against, are against the applicant. Now, I've got a respect for the gentleman that came up here and said, you know, "This is actually against my interest, my personal interest," but we need to respect the zoning plan that was established, otherwise you're going to open up a can of worms. And I forgot who said it, but you're absolutely right. The ink's not dry, and here we are already, asking for spot zoning, asking for some, asking to sandwich residential, low-density residential zoning neighborhood in between highway commercial. And let's be clear, I mean, your, your staff did a good job with their presentation, but the mud, but the water is still a little bit muddy because we're not using the proper terminology. What's out there? Local, just like the commissioner, the chairman properly pointed out, businesses that are there to support a neighborhood, to support a residential area, not destroy it. There is plenty of commercial property out at Exit 29 and elsewhere. The one thing the applicant has not done tonight or all the previous nights that we've been here is tell you they have no place else to go. We're not here arguing against development. And I don't know what his practice is or how many places he's been and how many variances and waivers he's gotten, but again, somebody else pointed out, look at the mess that it has caused previously. I've argued before, you, you've all heard from me, the planning commission's heard from me, you know, once we go down this slope, it's not going to stop. The local commercial that's near Majestic Oaks is not only simply local commercial, but in Mr. Amos's own request, I'm sorry, I believe it was Mr. Neal's own request back in 2009, limited uses, specific uses. There was no allowance, no vehicle, gas stations, repair, none of that's allowed. Instead, you had businesses such as barber shops, beauty shops, restaurants, delis, coffee shop, that type of thing. And you're right, who would object to that? Who would object to something that's going to support the neighborhood? But the idea that somehow a grocery store would be less of a nuisance out there than, than 18-wheel trucks. If you've seen the plan, and I moved to make the staff report part of the record here in case this judicial review is necessary, but if you've seen the plan, there's not even a proposed traffic light. Look, you, you have the entranceway and you have the exit right there, smack the middle, 45 miles zone, 50 mile, 5 mile per hour zone. I, I'm not trying to exaggerate, people are going to die. You're going to have truck traffic, and you're going to have a lot of it. And the only information we have about the amount is from Mr. Amos, unsupported, just is off the top of his head, 10 trucks a day. I say to that, I don't think so. I say that because all you need to do is look at the staff report. We're looking at a company that has $1.5 million in payroll. Somebody please tell me how that anyone can expect 10 trucks a day to support 1.5 million in payroll and 22 employees. 10 trucks a day, you need all that area, all that gravel area? And along with this comes the application for the corporate septic? And, you know, I don't know if Mr. Amos realizes it or not, but he's actually his own worst advocate. He's telling you that he's already developed other areas, and it's inching its way this way. Where? Towards Majestic Oaks, towards Garry's, and on forward. It's already happening, so we're asking you to stop it. No one's got a problem with local commercial. And the whole idea that you can come today after applying, making an, an application to change the zoning to highway commercial, and then say to the, and say to the board, "Well, we'd be happy with general." No. That's what's going to aggravate the public. Go ahead and do that and see how aggravated the public gets. No, what you need to do, if you're going to change your request, change your request and reapply. And let it be heard and let it be investigated by your staff. Before you make a special modification, an approval with, with conditions, let the staff investigate. Before you make a special modification, an approval with conditions, let the staff investigate it. I've already heard comments from the board, and I'm very appreciative. I just... And I don't want to sound so animated about it. You know, you don't want to beat a dead horse or lick it in the mouth, but let's just be clear about this. The gentleman's right, you know? Let's stand on principle, let's stick with our flum, and if you're going to ask for a waiver, there are conditions in your own ordinances that allow for those particular situations, none of which exist here. I wish Ms. Leaf was more clear about that. There's no reason for you... There's no... There's no reason pursuant to ordinance that you can grab a hold to. If you did approve it, it would be unfettered discretion. And that's what... That's what people don't approve of, and that's why we should stick with the flum. And I certainly hope that you do, and I appreciate the comments that you've said thus far. So, you said, and you warned me not to get redundant, and I'm not about to get body slammed, so I'll end it there. Thank you.
Just to kind of explain what we just went through there about the time, and each side gets 30 minutes. You know, if everybody comes together on one side and wants one person to speak for 30, well, we'll do that.
But you didn't ask the public that there were other people who wanted to speak in opposition.
Well, but I don't know that they didn't either, and, you know, sometimes it looks like we're making rules up as we go along, but I hope we're not. But no, it'll work out. Anybody else want to speak against the... Ma'am, if you'll come on up and state your name for the record.
I'm Donna Collins, and 13 months ago, I bought a home in Majestic Oaks. And I'd like to just give you a short version of my life story, how I chose, and what led me to purchasing a home there. I was born and raised here, as was my mom, except for going out of state to college. I landed a fabulous job, dream job, for a 20-something-year-old that out-traveled the entire country installing computer systems. And then at 30, I thought I should settle down, came back to Glen County, got married, had three boys, also born here. And tomorrow will mark six and a half years that I get the phone call, or the two police officers at the only home my boys ever knew, to tell me that we're faced with a family And a year after that, I was asked by Commissioner Clyde Taylor if I would come and speak to the commissioners for a resolution for a tradition of senior week and senior houses. And I did, still numb, not even knowing what I was doing. And I came here, and I spoke to you, and my largest audience prior to that had been little boys, and my SUV buckled in. And I knew that by faith that something good needed to come out of something so horrific. And it did, but I didn't have a clue that it began when I spoke right here at this podium five and a half years ago. And because I did, a lady in Waycross, that is, the Department of Public Health, was putting together a program called Teen Maze, and she asked if I would be interested in speaking as a volunteer. And she travels to 20 counties in her district, and the short version of Teen Maze is that it starts out with the drama department of the high school, and they put a play on for unsupervised party by teenagers that end tragically, and the local police, and state patrol, and EMS, and pastors. And the police actually raid the party, and they make arrests and charges, and some of the teenagers flee, and an accident happens, and they go outside of the gymnasium in the school, and there are actual wrecked cars, and the EMS comes in and carts them off. And then the teenagers come back into the gym, and judges and lawyers have also volunteered, and they have a mock trial. And then the teenagers, and it starts in 7th grade, and then the teenagers work their way through 10 different stations based on what the local school board and administrators... It involves the issues that teenagers face today: cell phones, bullying, drug awareness, teenage pregnancies. And after the 10 stations that they work their way through, and they're all manned by volunteers, doctors and nurses, and the funeral director, and every county is different, and they come back into the gymnasium, and I get to share Dalton's story. And it starts out with the four-minute DVD when he was born at the local hospital here until the day that I placed him in the ground on 22nd Street, down the street here. And I tell them what happened, and the bottom line is that choices matter, and every decision that everyone... Someone makes will affect someone else, and it can be generational. And so, a couple of years ago, I knew that it was time to leave the only home that my boys had ever known in the enclave, the house we built 25 years ago. And I did my research, and I had methodology, and I had envisioned Collins, because my boys told me that home would be wherever I was. And so, I spent months before I spoke to a real estate agent, and I went through every neighborhood many times, different days, different times of the day, because I knew what I wanted, and I knew that I would find it. And I did at Majestic Oaks. And if you haven't been through Majestic Oaks, I'd just like to tell you, it's the first time in all the neighborhoods that I went through, I knew that I wanted to leave the It was the only neighborhood that, as I drove through, one afternoon after lunch, the lady walking her dog threw her hand up and waved. It has a nice entrance, has sidewalks, streetlights, street lamps, curbs and gutters, homeowner association, better than my neighborhood that I had in the enclave on the island, out of the flood zone. I also had a plan and looked to see what amenities there were nearby: convenience stores, post office, fire, rescue, Jesus and Dunkin' Donuts. I had everything that I needed and wanted. The plan also, which hasn't been mentioned or shown, is there's three phases, and in the... After a certain number of homes are sold, Majestic Oaks is to have a pool and a community center. And I envisioned that, that when my children have children, that they want to come and visit, and they can ride their battery-operated carts, little cars, Hot Wheels, up and down the sidewalks, we can enjoy the pool. I don't want to see industrial lights. I didn't buy my property to see industrial lights, to hear car... Large equipment washes. And so, I'm not in favor. And I think that, as Teen Maze does, choices matter, and it affects generations, and it affects someone else. Every decision that is made affects someone else. And thank you for your time.
Ma'am, thank you, and I want to extend my condolences to you on the loss of your son, and I was sitting up here that night.
You were, and Mr. Coleman was, and Richard Strickland was there.
And Commissioner Booker, he was here.
Okay. It was still kind of a blur. Teen Maze has helped me thaw out some, and I never would have believed that I speak to thousands of teenagers every year.
Well, I'm encouraged that you're out advocating for what you believe in, and that's what it's all about?
It is, and I... Like I said, by faith, there had to be something good had to come out of it, and I never would have, but it started right here, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else want to get up and speak against the application? Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close the public comment period. I think we had about 24 minutes spent on that tonight, so... Commissioners, y'all have any questions? Any further questions of staff? Rather, the public hearing portion.
Well, Stephanie had to have one question. Earlier today, I had requested, and it was sent, and I haven't seen a part of the package where it broke out the different uses on 341 versus 82. And one of the things that stands out on that map, I don't know if you have it, do you have it?
Yeah, I can pull it up, sure.
If you'll scroll down to where we get commercial at 95 and 17 in Black Island Highway.
Did I go too far?
No, I don't think you did. That's not the map that I have.
You know, there were... Okay, there's two in there.
I'm looking at the other one. Sorry.
Was it the zoning, not the future land use?
Yes, I think it's that one.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like it.
Okay, there we go.
Is there any way you can zoom in into that area down where 95 and 17 and Black Island Anyway, on the map that was sent to me earlier today, it almost looks like Black Island Highway becomes a natural... Or becomes a barrier on commercial... The commercial enterprises that are around the interstate, is that correct?
This doesn't quite go far enough south, though.
Okay. Well, I guess my question, just familiar with that interchange area, is Black Island Highway considered a sort of a demarcation line for the commercial in that area? There's just a little bit of the triangle just on the west side of it, but everything seems to be from 95 to that road and stops. Is that a fair assessment of the zoning out there?
So, you're saying basically south of Black Island Highway would be more residential than in uses?
I would say at the intersection of Black Island Highway and 17, where the truck stops are and all that. If you look at the map that was sent to me earlier today, I mean, all of that to the... I guess I would call it to the east of Black Island Highway is really all commercial, heavy industrial commercial. Is that our highway commercial, is that correct?
A lot of it's freeway commercial.
Well, my question is, is that a natural line that's demarking, delineating where we, as a community, want the highway freeway commercial to be versus... Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm sorry. Initially, I was thinking 341 and community road Black Island Highway. But yes, I... That is a... So, we're talking about 17 and Black Island Highway. That is a fair statement for sure. It's definitely freeway commercial and highway commercial right around there, and as you had out of there.
But it looks like anything south and east of Black Island Highway is sort of delineated by the highway itself, except for that one little corner, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner, any more discussion or any more questions of staff? Well, if there's none, y'all want to make a motion, or somebody want to make a motion
This is quite uncharacteristically silent up here.
I think they're tired.
Maybe so. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to deny the future land use map amendment.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Okay, I call the motion. All those in favor of denying, raise your right hand. Those opposed to denying, same. Okay, it is five to deny, one against. Item five, ZM 4010, Flint Equipment Company, consider a request to rezonate a 15.65-acre property located at 3600 Highway 82 from forest agriculture and local commercial to highway commercial. The applicant desires to establish a new heavy equipment retail and service business on the property. Parcel ID 02-00513, Chris Amos, CSEC Incorporated Agent for Chris Cannon, Flint Equipment Company applicant, and P.E. Drawdy Jr., and Margaret F. Snow owners. Steffi?
Thank you. This is ZM 4010, and this is the rezon for Flint Equipment Company. And this is your zoning map again, the future land use map. This is a site plan that you saw in the last presentation. And then, the planning commission action at this regular meeting of October 1st, 2019, the Malin Planning Commission voted 3-3, with Commissioner Williams absent that evening, during two votes taken during the meeting. So, the first vote that they took, or first motion, was to... Was in favor of denial, and the second motion was in favor of approval, subject to restrictions. And the restrictions were that it would be specific to Flint Equipment Company, outdoor storage, and that there would be limited hours of operation. And both votes failed to carry a majority vote, so they were both 3-3. These are your possible actions. The recommended motion is to move to deny applications, ZM 4010. And there are standards of evaluation that are in your staff report, and then between the October 1 Malin Planning Commission meeting and tonight, the applicants did submit some additional information, some traffic counts, some information on their payroll and economic impacts, and those were included in your staff report package. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicants are here as well.
Commissioner, any questions? And if you want to ask questions of Steffi or the applicant? If not, we'll go into the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, if you'll approach the podium and state your name for the record?
So, Chris Amos with CSEC again, and there are some additional points on the rezoning itself that I would like to address now that the big-picture item is out of the way, the future land use map. We would like to focus on the actual project itself. One of the things that I would like to talk about is traffic. There has been some discussion of traffic here tonight. The total... And you have this in your packets, and I don't remember exactly what the... The total, and you have this in your packets, and I don't remember exactly what the numbers are. Okay, then I can drive. I don't know if you can see this or not. I can't even really see myself. According to the Georgia Department of Transportation, the average daily truck traffic on 82 is 1,414 trucks. The traffic counts that we used in our analysis were provided by Flint Equipment, based on other facilities that they operate. The total number of lowboys a day of between 10 and 12 is based on their other facilities of this size and this type in the state of Georgia primarily, but in other ones as well. So that represents a 0.7% increase in the truck traffic. Now, honestly, most of those trucks are on the road now because they're going to Flint's other location, which is on Perry Lane Road, which they are having to leave later on or early next year. They're leasing that facility and they have to move, which is why this search for a new site has been on, it's been on for more than three years. Chris Cannon with Flint Equipment is here and I will let him address those issues whenever he gets up to speak. But so most of those, most of those trucks are going either to 303 or they're going to 95 and then going up to their other facilities. So the actual number of trucks that it's going to increase is probably less than 10 to 12. There is obviously other traffic that's going to be in there. There are pickup trucks that are coming in to buy parts and there are employees that are coming in and out, but those numbers are dramatically less than many other commercial developments would be. In addition to looking at traffic, we also, Mr. Cannon, engaged Goldringer Engineering to do a noise and visual impact study. So if you can see right here is one of the places, so Goldringer Engineering did two things with the noise study. They measured the ambient levels of noise from 82 and then they also, based on the equipment, the hours of operation in Flint's other facilities, they modeled the noise that this project is going to generate. So the little green dots there, there, and there, and one more further down here right next to, right next to Majestic Oaks in the entrance, all of those were modeled and compared to the ambient noise levels. This map shows the model generated noise levels in decibels, which I know you can't read that, in magenta and in blue. And if you go through the study, which you have been provided a copy of, the model noise levels are lower than the ambient noise in every single location except one, which is on 82, and it's just barely above the noise level on that one. In addition to the noise study, Goldringer also did a visual impact study to look at what the impacts to the community would be from, the red primarily from the residential So here on this graphic in yellow is the view shed, which is the areas that you will actually be able to see the facility from, from everything around the site. They also did two different cross sections looking at the site and to see what portion of the site could be seen, and I hope, you can see this much better in your graphic, but the line of sight at the top of the building is shown. And from Majestic Oaks, there's no visual impact at all. There's a small amount from across the street, obviously, because we don't have a buffer on the frontage of Highway 82. So to mitigate, and this was in the original plan, but to mitigate these effects, we put the 50-foot buffer all the way around the site, a 50-foot understore buffer around the site, to try to do as much as we could to minimize the impacts on adjoining property. The immediately south of this project is where the commercial that is already included in the Majestic Oaks zoning is likely going to go, and that's going to be in between this site and the Majestic Oaks existing residential facilities that are there. The piece of property that is east of the railroad is not going to be part of this project. It's landlocked, it's not accessible. It's either going to be deeded to the adjoining property owners who I have spoken with, or it's going to be placed in some kind of a conservation easement, but it's not going to be included as part of this project. I do note that I don't believe any of those property owners are here tonight. This graphic is showing in red and green the Bhopal parcel and the Majestic Oaks parcel that currently are undeveloped. Although Majestic Oaks is not part of this rezoning request, I do want to address it since it was brought up by one of the other speakers. Majestic Oaks was originally, an application to rezone, to modify the planned development zoning of Majestic Oaks was filed at the same time that this application was filed. It was felt in coordinating with staff that it would be better to try to address all of these at the same time. We did make an application to rezone the Bhopal parcel, which is included in the Majestic Oaks planned development zoning, but is not owned by the Majestic Oaks owners. We did make a request to rezone that to highway commercial because it was our, it was a misunderstanding. It was our belief that that parcel was originally zoned highway commercial. After the application was made and coordinating with staff, we learned that it had not been highway commercial, but had instead been Forest Ag. The request was withdrawn because we have to go back and rework that. And the plan is not to try to force highway commercial into that parcel, but to take the commercial uses from the Majestic Oaks PD that are already zoned and to allow those in the Bhopal parcel. That would leave the remainder of Majestic Oaks as single-family and multifamily residential in accordance with the existing planned development zoning. That, in case you haven't seen it, is a three-dimensional perspective of what this facility is going to look like, based on the building and the site plan that you've already seen. And you can see that this is a very, a very attractive facility. And I want to bring this one back up one more time because this is, this is showing all of the commercial uses that are currently adjacent to this. Once again, the lighter purple areas that immediately abut the Majestic Oaks parcel are highway commercial. So we have highway commercial right next to this project already. The two green parcels on the east of this, east side of this map are wagon or trucking and tidewater equipment. I have dimensions on there, which you probably can't see. From the corner of the wagon and trucking property to the corner of Majestic Oaks is 1,280 feet. From the closest line on Majestic Oaks to the Flint Equipment site is 1,840 feet. So we currently have a trucking facility that isn't open from 7:30 to 5, which is what the hours of operation for Flint Equipment are, that's 600 feet closer to the site, maybe, I may have done the math wrong. It's significantly closer to the site than what we're asking for. In addition to that, we have tidewater equipment, a very similar facility, which is to Flint, which is on 82, and is within the zone that Flint would be to Majestic Oaks. And I think that's all I have. Mr. Cannon is going to address the economic impact of the site. I can say that in consulting with the real estate broker on this, that they have been searching for a piece of property to relocate this facility on for approximately two or three years, despite the claims that there are other properties out there that this can go on. They were unable to find one of those, which is how this site was selected to begin with. And in our initial consultation with staff, which didn't consider the future land use map amendment, but the zoning itself, we felt like this was something that could be done. So I can answer any, if you got anybody, anybody has any questions about the specifics of this. We would like if the board would consider approving this rezoning to include the restrictions that we asked the Planning Commission to consider, which is that it will be limited to Flint Equipment and the hours of operation will be limited from 7:30 to 5, so that there's to minimize the concern that they could get this rezoned and then put something else on it. So this would be specific to this project. Once upon a time, we would have done, tried to do a planned development zoning on this because we use single-use PDs a lot to restrict uses and to have a site-specific or use-specific zoning. We are now in the Canton-Glen County, trying to phase the planned development zoning process out, so we could not use that.
Commissioners, any questions?
Commissioners, thank you for letting us come for you today and we'll try to make this as quick as we can. I know you're tired.
If you want to state your name for the record.
Chris Cannon. I'm the president and owner of Flint Equipment Company. I'd like to tell you a little bit about our company, so you know what kind of corporate citizen we are and how we operate, and then real briefly what our project's all about. Flint Equipment, we own and operate 29 John Deere dealerships all through the state of Georgia, South Carolina, Alabama, and a little bit of Florida. Our companies have been around for 50, 55 years and so we understand the need to fit into a community and be a part of it and we take a lot of pride in doing that. So we want to make sure you know, we've been over on Perry Lane Road for 30 years now and quite frankly, something about the project, we've outgrown that building. Our company can't grow anymore where we are there. So we need a better place for our employees, give them better working conditions. We need a place that our customers can come into and we're properly sized to take care of their business. And our preference is to stay here in Glen County, so that's what we're trying to address The building is about a 45,000 square foot building. We've built similar buildings to this over the years. We spend somewhere in that $5.5 to $6 million on these buildings exclusive of the land and we landscape them to every extent that we can professionally landscape. And you can see, we do take a lot of pride in making sure that we've got the proper buffers so that we do fit into the neighborhood. I'll tell you, with 29 locations, we have many locations where we're sitting right next to a neighborhood and I have never had any complaints about the way our facilities look, about the noise, about the working conditions. I know of no complaint we've ever gotten anywhere. Our facility in Greenville-Spartanburg in South Carolina, for instance, we were in the neighborhood first and the residential neighborhood grew up around us. So we do, we do try to fit in and we don't know of any, anything here that would be a nuisance to the neighbors, particularly with the distance that we're separated from. Chris, I miss anything?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to come up and speak in favor?
Good afternoon. My name is Charles Thompson. I currently work at the Flint location here on Perry Lane Road. I'm the service manager there. So basically, I was wanting to give some firsthand information on what we see day to day and that way we're not getting lawyer talk or whatever, so it's kind of a, I guess, a blue collar man, you know, what we see. So on a daily basis, we see, on a good day, maybe five or six lowboy trucks in and out and we have a truck that is in and out a couple of times a day that's included also. We might have, I don't know, 10 customers a day on a average day. Some days we're a little bit busier, some days we're not. We have 20 employees. Not all employees come to the store every day, so you have probably 15 personal vehicles that come in and out. We're not loud, we don't have a lot of commotion, we would make a good neighbor. You would never even know we're there. Anyone that has a job from nine to five basically would ride by, see that we're open, come back home and we're gone. So I don't see where we would really corrupt or causing a problem as far as, you know, being a danger to people coming and going as they normally do, you know? Let's see what else. We don't, I don't know, I'm kind of getting kind of nervous about this because I really, this is not my thing. I'm a mechanic and I've been this for years and now I'm in a service manager position, so basically, we're good people. We have a lot of people from this county that works with us. We're not going to cause any problems. We'd be a good addition to that area. So I'd like for y'all to really consider this. We're not, we're not going to be of any problem at all, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else want to come up and speak?
Good evening. My name is Matt Smallwood. I work for Flint Equipment and I've been in this business for 29 years, around construction, Deere equipment, Deere dealerships. And I just want to set the record straight a little bit about who we are and what we do. We're, we cover, I'm not sure how he knows what our payroll is, but we're, we have employees in places all over Georgia and South Carolina and Alabama. We are a hard-working place. We, if you think of a car dealership, we're sort of the car dealership for heavy equipment. People that build neighborhoods, build schools, build sewer systems, build utilities, electricity, everything that comes to you. We sell equipment, support those people so they can keep you going and we can keep growing the community. We are good neighbors. My people work hard. We are, we show to work at 7:30 and we're, by 5 o'clock, most everybody's gone. We don't work on the weekends. We don't have trucks coming and going in the middle of the night. We don't have, occasionally, we have somebody that needs parts in the middle of the night. I'll be honest with you, 10 o'clock at night and we come in, we help them. That's what we do to support people. But we're a, we're a good neighbor. We've been a good neighbor. We're a good neighbor in lots of communities. And if you look at, I guess one thing, the tidewater place, as Chris mentioned, is closer than we would be. And we have been on Perry Lane Road for 30 years on a two-lane highway, if everybody knows where Perry Lane Road is. We've never had an accident with anybody on the road and now we're looking at, I was one of the ones that found this site. And my intention was, it was a five-lane highway, four lanes with a turning lane, close to 95, headed towards Waycross, and my customers are coming north and south and east and west. So it's easy access for everybody to get to our business and that makes a lot of sense for us. So I guess I would like for you to consider the fact that we would be, we're not, you know, everybody works hard, we need to rest, nobody wants to work on the weekends, and we would be a good additional community. I don't see how we could interfere with anything. We're not much noise, not much traffic. The 10 to 12 trucks, you know, that's about a maximum. We have equipment coming and going, we work on it, keep people going. So I would, I think that's about all I was wanting to say, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to help you. I'm very familiar with what we do.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to come up and speak?
Good evening. My name is PJ Zabrowski and I've been a 30-plus-year employee for Flint Equipment Company and some of you Commissioners I've dealt with in parts and service on your equipment. And the amount of extra trucks that are going to be coming in and out of Flint is very negligible. Most of the log trucks that are coming down 82 go up 303 to the pulp mill are a lot of our customers and it's not going to add a lot of extra truck traffic to it. We do a lot of our business through parts, through Waycross and Blackshear where we are shipping out a lot of parts, so it cuts down. are shipping out a lot of parts, so it cuts down on the amount of truck traffic coming in. Our hours that the technicians work are from 7:30 to 4:00, Monday through Friday, so pretty much any noise that's made is stopped at 4:00. Our business is open till 5:00. Generally, Chuck and I are there finishing up paperwork, last-minute sales, this and that, but we do not have any trucks coming in or out of our property after 5:00 in the evening. And yes, we do get the occasional customer that needs parts at 8:00, 10:00 at night, and generally, I'm the one that runs down there to take care of those things. And just as far as the noise goes, like I said, 4:00 gets done. It's not on the weekends. There's no trucks with loudspeakers coming in and out at all hours of the night, and we have been good neighbors to the surrounding ones. Anytime JD Moore across the street from us needed to borrow piece of equipment to unload a fuel tank or do any yard work over there, we've always helped them out. The Georgia State Patrol, when they were on the corner, we were good neighbors to them, helping them out with any needs that they had, and just we've been, you know, good neighbors. We're quiet, we're clean. We've never had any problems with the EPA or OSHA or any of those things for work environment, and I'd appreciate it if you would consider us good neighbors and vote the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak in favor of the application? Anyone else want to speak in favor of the application? Okay, we're going to move to the other side. Anyone want to speak against the application? Sir, we've already got somebody beating you to the podium.
We have to stand here and oppose, because if we don't, then it seems that, as though we acquiesce, we've already heard the, I think, the technical arguments about zoning. The prior speaker was right. There, these issues are intertwined, and so I will simply incorporate by reference all the arguments I made against, against the change in the, the map. Incorporate that into the argument against this, and I'll simply address the arguments made in favor of this. We heard Mr. Amos give a bunch of measurements and tell, Mr. Amos told the board how close Majestic Oaks already is to the truck stops. Well, thankfully for us, the commission is well aware of Glen County, Brunswick, and what is where, and I suspect his measurements are from the very back of Majestic Oaks to the very corner of whatever truck stop he's talking about, but we all know the layout. And my eyes are too bad to read the gentleman's name at the far, my far left, but he's right. That particular highway, the Blythe Island Highway, is a line of demarcation, and after it, there's, there's a transition. And I, I still can't figure out, after listening to these employees, I mean, why, I mean, yes, I'm sure you're good neighbors elsewhere. We just don't want you to be our neighbor. We, we, we don't want, it's not that we have anything against business or Mr. Cannon or, or the employees that have spoken, but, you know, certain things go in certain places. You don't put a liquor store next to a church. Okay? He's talking, Mr. Amos is talking about, oh, you know, this is, the, the plan developed for Majestic Oaks. Well, guess what? When that eventually gets finished, it's going to practically, if not actually, abut the Flint Equipment property, and you're going to have residential adjoining the highway commercial. Mr. Amos talked about, you know, he keeps pointing to some maps, and I, I'm getting really aggravated about this. Loosely says, just, there's, look at all this commercial that's already there. For the last time, let's be specific, local commercial, neighborhood-friendly. Highway commercial, heavy commercial, there's, there are two interchangeable terms. It's not neighborhood-friendly. Flint, the, the property, the business site that they're proposing is not neighborhood-friendly, not because they're bad people or a bad business, but because, as I've said before, and I'm sorry, Chairman, it's a foothold. It's the slippery slope. It's the, well, we already have this, what's another spot? And I'm still not convinced about your traffic estimates either, gentlemen. It sounds to me with that size of that facility, you can have a whole lot more than 10 vehicles a, a day, and if you're expecting to expand, then by the very nature of the word expansion, you're going to have more traffic. So, I mean, let's be clear about this. We're trying to stick with a pattern, we're starting to stick with a principle, and we're trying to stick with the rules so that we can all rely on them. And the, the notion that, that, you know, oh, don't worry, neighbors, we're not going to bother you. Well, maybe you won't. I think you will. It's the future, and it's the evolution of the spot zoning, and as I said at the last time I was here, eventually, your, your neighborhood gets rezoned from beneath your feet. Not one of these persons from Flint has said anything to the commission about that. Why? Because they can't, because they know it's going to happen, because they're the ones doing it. And this thing about, well, we'll go ahead and go with the general use. No, no. You want to make another application? We'll have this argument again, but you can't come up here and change your, and, and change the, your, your request simply because it's convenient for you, and you're not going to get what you want the first time. And this thing about, also about special conditions. Gentlemen, please, I mean, when we consider our ordinances, which is, from what I understand, what the envisioned Glen is up for reconsideration, let's do something about these special amendments. They're not enforceable, and they're not permanent. And as we've seen, the very first case that we heard today, I, I call it the Rooster case, because we all heard about the roosters for so long the first time. I, I don't know how many times they've come back and forth trying to get a change. And so if that business doesn't succeed, or if it expands, I hope it does, wherever you guys end up, if it expands, they're going to want another change, and another change. We need to move, we need to relocate again. I have a buy for the property. Can you please lift the restriction that you placed on us? I mean, how, how, how is anyone going to argue that you're going to lock that land up to Flint? I, I, gentlemen, I don't, I don't think that's constitutional to lock land up like that. So what they're asking for is, if you want to use layman terms, is not doable. I certainly don't think it's legal, but clearly, it's not a good idea.
Sir, you're six minutes, I mean, you're five minutes.
Can I have just 20 more seconds?
Sure.
I do not want Mr. Cannon to leave Glen County. I would love for him to have his business. All I'm asking him is that he place it in an inappropriate place. I'd be glad to do whatever I can to help him find something, but I think they'd need to try a little bit harder. I heard the three years, but let them find a better place.
Thank you.
My name is Ron Lewis, and I'd like to address some things that Mr. Amos said about the, the noise. I just happened to be working on my property one day, and I seen a guy out there in a truck, and he was doing some work, and I'm thinking, that's the DOT, they're going to put a turn-in lane right here on Tyson Drive, because there've been a couple of accidents there. And I said, that's great. So I just quit work and walked over there and talked to him, and he said he was doing sound tests. And I said, sound test? He said, yeah, we're, we're checking the, the sound on the highway. I said, okay. And we was talking there, and he said, you know, back behind this property back there, it's quiet as it can be. He said, is there, is there Martian stuff back there? I said, yeah, and the river. And it dawned on me what he was, what he was doing then, what was, was for that property, which is fine, but the funny thing about it is he's from Jacksonville. The people that own the property down below there, my understanding, they're from Jacksonville, so I think it's just a kind of big coordinated deal that if they can get this zone, they'll be able to come back to you and zone the other property down toward Majestic Oaks. And the zoning of that property, he was talking about commercial, the commissioners zoned that years ago to commercial, and then the people didn't even buy it. So we've already made one mistake there, and I don't know if we need to make another one in that same area. I, I don't know that it sounds good about trying to zone property if you don't own it. It just seemed like to me that you should own the piece of property. I know when I bought my property there at Tyson in 2012, it was already zoned. If it had been residential or agricultural forestry, I wouldn't have bought it, because it just, it, it would not suit my needs for, to, to have a little commercial property. The, the deal about the real estate company, I think Mr. White just couldn't find a piece of property that he could sell, but there are other real estate companies right across 95. It's been, Berkshire's been advertising the property for a long time, because I actually called to find out what they wanted for it. And I'm impressed with the CEO of Flint, seems like he's been a pretty successful man, seems like he's, when he's talking about building four and $5 million buildings, it's not a big deal to put a couple hundred more thousand dollars in the land to buy a piece that's already been cleared, that has already been graded. It would be very less intrusive to anyone. It's property that's already available there. And, and I, my, my comment would be to the commissioner on the far left over there that brought up the fact that, why would we try to amend our, our plan before we tried to zone this property? It, it, it doesn't seem like it, it makes much sense, because y'all have already voted five to one to deny that, so you would think that the, the request to zone, rezone this would be mute. You know, it just doesn't make sense that we're still talking about the same thing in the same meeting for the third time, you know? But anyhow, that's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak against?
My name's Marion McGraw. I spoke a few minutes ago, and I will keep this very brief. I just want to bring back to your remembrance the four questions that I ended my comments with. If this is approved, will it comply with the envisioned Glen Plan, which shows this area as primarily low-density residential? The highway commercial things on the purple on the map that show, were, was shown, there's a church there, there's a radio station, very small, with some towers. That's very different from a large equipment company. The second question, will it set a precedent for even more commercial development all around Majestic Oaks and nearby residential neighborhoods? The third one, will it open the door for similar requests throughout Glen County to alter the very carefully-developed envisioned Glen Plan? And finally, will it cause the people of Glen County to lose confidence and trust in our commissioners to use the envisioned Glen Plan when making decisions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to come up to the podium and speak against the application? Okay, we're going to closed public comment period, and commissioners, do y'all have any further discussions or questions of anyone?
I, I had a couple of quick questions for, I guess, the gentleman who said he helped them find the location.
Who you want?
He said he helped them identify the location.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 the employee that, yeah, yeah. If you want to come up to the podium, please, sir.
Just two simple questions. Did you have any alternative sites?
We did. We looked at a place, two places on 341. We looked at a place on, I don't know what that road is, 99, what is the road exit, 42 runs across. We looked at several, but a couple of things we're looking for is easy access to the interstate and to get west. A main corridor appears to us to go east to west is 82 out of Brunswick, and the majority of our customers, or a lot of our customers, come from Pierce, Ware County, down into Clinch, come into Brunswick to get to us. And then we need to go north and south. We have customers in Long Macintosh. So the site that we found, that we found on 82 seemed very natural for easy access and visibility. We also need some visibility for our customers to be able to find us, because we get people from out of town coming in. So yes, we did look at other sites. This one logically made a lot of sense for us, and it was a footprint, a big enough footprint, that we could easily fit our facility in it. We need about eight to 10 acres is really what we need.
Also, did anyone suggest to you to have a, maybe a meeting with the residents right behind you?
The residents?
Yeah, the, the folk who live in the neighborhood right behind you.
Well, to be honest with you, sir, we did not even realize that neighborhood was there originally, and the neighborhood is, the entrance to it, you go about, I don't know, 300 or 400 yards, a half, a quarter mile into the, into that street before you see a house, and it's about, if you look at the map that they proposed, you know, it's, I don't know, 400, I don't know, Chris, how far is it from the entrance to that to the property line? It's...
From property corner to property corner of the Deere's lot, it's right at 1900.
So, I mean, it was a good ways away. We never noticed, until we came to the planning. We weren't expecting this kind of opposition, to be honest with you. We came to the planning meeting back on October 1st, was the first we knew that there would be any objections to us. So, no, sir, we didn't, because we didn't, we didn't, didn't see it.
Thank you.
Commissioners, y'all have any other questions? If not...
Stephanie, could you put the motions up on...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we deny the application, ZM 4010.
That's a motion to deny. Okay. We have a motion on the floor with a second. Any further discussion? I call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Cannon, Mr. Cannon, I, I've known about your company for 55 years. I have, and I know you haven't been involved that long, but in all my friends in Darty County, I have never heard anyone utter anything but accolades for you and your company, the way you've run it, the way you've grown it, and my greatest wish right now, because I just got heartburn, is that you can figure out a place to put your company in Glen County. We would very much be honored to have you as part of our community.
Yeah, I'd also like to say, it, it gave me heartburn to have to vote the way I did, but it was all on principle and what I think is right, and, you know, that, that company's been out there, I, I know where you are. I've gone by it a thousand, million times, and great company, and good neighbors, and I believe everything they said there, but it was just a, you know, we want you to hang around. around here, we really do. We're not telling you we got any negatives about you. We're just dealing with a zoning, this is a zoning issue. And, you know, thank you.
I'm sorry, is it still thirsty?
Yep.
I've lost my computer. I feel like I've been in the impeachment hearings.
Consent agenda?
There we go. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve consent agenda, general business and consent agenda pension committee with exception of any item that a commissioner wishes to pull for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item nine.
Okay, we have a motion to accept everything except whatever commission...
Outset.
Okay, we have, all right, we have a motion and a second. To accept everything except item nine. So any discussion, clarification, being none? All those in favor to approve everything except item nine? Signify by raising your right hand. I'm a little slow. All right, that's approved unanimously. Okay, item nine, Commissioner Booker.
This is a item that the land bank has been trying to move on, doing something with the property there on 17. Everybody's familiar with the old hotel. The owner is here tonight, and I've been working with him to try to get some things done. And he did, he raised some issues to me that I think we need to consider. I know John Hunter is here, who's been staffing the land bank. And one of the reasons we were looking at it was because of the possible hazards on the site. We felt that we might be able to get some resources to clean it up, and then it would be more attractive for a developer. But also, in talking with the owner and then rethinking it, I think there's a better way to go at it. And I was concerned about the land bank taking on the liability of it because, you know, what if it takes a while for us to get the grant? Then we will be responsible for it, and everybody's saying it's an ISO. I think the owner would say that it has some site challenges. But there was something the city did some time ago with Brownfield that I think we need to revisit. And can he speak? I guess, yeah.
John, come up, say your name.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm John Hunter. I'm a senior planner with the City of Brunswick and serve as the primary staff contact for the land bank. Commissioner Booker, as you were alluding to, when this issue last came up this past summer during the land bank meetings, one of the items that I was tasked to do was to look specifically at potential hazards at the property to identify whether or not there would be potential funding sources for that. What we were able to identify through the title search is that within the past land history of that property, there were two items that were potential red flags as potential hazards. One, that there was a gas station at that location or adjacent to that location in the 1950s. You never know whether there's ground contaminants from that. Also, that the property was owned by, I believe it was the Gulf States or Gulf South Creosoting Company. Anytime you see the word Creosoting, that starts to give you some ideas of that there might be some potential cleanup needed at the site. Obviously, the property's been developed for a long time, but that allowed us to be able to understand a little bit about what was going on there along with the actual condition of the building. So as we examined potential funding sources for that, we'd been involved over the last couple of years, looking very closely at the Brownfield program. One of the prerequisites for the cleanup grants is that the property be owned by the applicant agency and that it be a government agency.
Well, I want us to relook, that's why I want to pull this, because I was on the advisory board when the city got those Brownfield grants previously, and that wasn't the case.
And you're correct, for that type grant, those were assessment grants, and those assessment grants could...
Well, they allowed, they allowed them to do some cleanup because the old Mercedes-Benz place there on Norris Street, the guy who owned that wanted to sell it to the churches, it happened to be some Latino churches. And then there were some other gas stations. But that in particular, I remember, it allowed the cleanup, and he was able to sell it. So my thinking is for us to look at that again without having to assume the responsibility of whatever the hazards are on there, and especially since the land bank doesn't have any resources. And right now, as part of a first kind of project, if we had, we've been around a little bit more and actually made some money doing something, I wouldn't be as concerned.
And I do understand the concern of the liability, trust me. As you know, we've had those discussions at land bank meetings well before we even made the motion back in June to move forward and start addressing this. It's been a, it's been a longstanding discussion point.
And I'm in support of us doing something and working with the owner. He's here tonight, Mr. Chairman, he may want to add something. Go ahead.
John, I'm serving the land bank, but I thought what's very interesting, you said it has to be owned by the applicant agency, is that correct?
Yes, and that being a government agency for that particular cleanup grant.
The land bank qualifies for that.
Yes, it does.
And because we qualify that, we can get the Brownfield grants, is that correct?
We can apply, we're eligible to apply for them, yes. I never guarantee the grants, unfortunately.
But I wanted us, the reason I pulled this, to look at trying to get, if we can do it with an assessment grant, we need to revisit that because it gives us the best of both worlds. No liability, but also being able to get it cleaned up. And we're still working with the owner at the same time. We're not assuming somebody else's property. And it's given him time to try to get it developed. We did get a developer to look at the property a couple days ago and gave him some ideas on what he could do with it and how he could do it as well. But I didn't want us to stop our process, what we decided, and when I remembered that we can still go forward with this, but it may have to be an assessment grant. But it allowed that property to be cleaned up and so that the owner could sell it. And I think we should at least look at that.
Commissioners, y'all have any questions for John, anybody else?
Yeah, I do. Mr. Hunter, so what's the scope of this Brownfield grant? You've talked about possible contamination from the Creosote, possible contamination from a previous filling station. What about the darn building that might have asbestos in it? I mean, isn't that the biggest issue here rather than the soil? And how do you deal with that?
You don't necessarily know for certain whether or not that's actually a bigger issue than what might be in the ground, I think, as we know from some of the Brownfield issues that we've dealt with within this community. Without us having full access to be able to assess the site, to know what potential asbestos or lead paint or any other hazards might be there, the short answer would be all of that could be cleaned up as part of a Brownfield project. It would all be considered as part of the issues at the site.
The building and the soil.
The building and the soils, yes. Part of the way that EPA looks at the overall conditions is it all contributes to its current status as a dilapidated building with the potential for having been a Brownfield.
So that being the case, Commissioner Booker, does it make sense with the, I think you called it an assessment grant, or the one that a private individual might apply for?
No, the city applied for it. The city applied and had the grant. That's what I'm saying. It doesn't stop that process. The city got, I think they got two grants. And I, like I said, I was on the advisory board, and they were able to help these business owners get their properties cleaned up, and they were able to sell them, so.
So the city was able to get private property owners clearance of their land at government expense? What happens to the $125,000 of tax liability that's attached to the property now?
Well, that has to be worked out with the owner. But none of that, I mean, right now, my concern is the land bank taking on, like you said, because I hadn't considered the building. When the owner mentioned that to me, I said, oh, wait a minute, let's rethink this. And so we don't know, that's pretty expensive to, so we've got to get a large enough grant once we do find out, you know, how contaminated it is to cover that. And that's fine if that's the only way we end up doing it. But I think that we need to, we need to slow up a minute and look and see if we can do both of them. And I know it was done because I was on the advisory board. Now, maybe they've stopped that program, but I don't know that.
I do know there have been some changes within the last two or three years. I can't verify what those are. Obviously, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, the person who's over the Brownfield is Camilla Mar.
Right.
And she's been down here, I've spoken with her.
Yeah, she was very helpful in our application this last cycle, looking at some other issues that we run successfully.
And she's open to working with us.
So if I'm hearing it correctly, if we follow what Commissioner Booker is suggesting and see if we can get this grant certified for the individual, then maybe we can move down that path, maybe, maybe, and then we got a problem with $125,000 with the tax bill.
It potentially addresses one issue at the site, yes.
I get it. But let's say the program's changed, and let's say it's no longer available, and we find that out in a relatively short period of time, would it be possible just to come back and revisit the same application?
Definitely, yes. As far as I would think the land bank would be concerned at this point, unless they withdraw it, I would see it as a standing request until otherwise instructed.
Right.
If the land bank takes the property, Mr. Hunter, how long would it take generally to apply for the Brownfield and to put that in motion?
That is actually a little bit of a luxury that we have currently is that the, we would not be able to apply for the current round, which is actually due in about two weeks. So we would have roughly a year before we could apply again, and then you're somewhat at the whim of the federal government in that process, so it would take some time after that to get through their granting process.
So would the land bank be able to do anything with the property at all if there's the fear of asbestos in the building? Could we?
Well, you're then also, we could potentially do some assessment work, you know, potentially in cooperation with the owner. But at that point, you're also asking the land bank to take on some responsibilities that are kind of outside of their purview.
Yeah.
Because we don't own the property.
Wouldn't the owner at that point in time be eliminated from the property?
If you were to go forward with transferring the tax deeds to the land bank, the land bank's intention was to pursue going through the legal process that's set up under the state codes that govern land banks, bar redemption on the tax deeds, go through the formal process to handle that and also establish a quiet title and extinguish the outstanding taxes and then put the property on the market jointly while also looking at dealing with the environmental issues.
With other condemnation issues that we have dealt with in the past, does not, whatever expense the land bank incurs, is this more like a foreclosure to go for clean title or is it would the expenses incurred by the land bank be subject to and come after all the other liens that are on the property?
Commissioners, those are two different processes out there. So the condemnation process that the county has, the city has as well, is a different process than the tax deed foreclosure process. So I think what you're describing is the process where they would, wouldn't own the property, but get a court order to go on there and clean it up, and then put a lien on the property for those costs. That's not what the land bank is talking about tonight.
Okay, thank you. And then, and then one other. What is the process for notification to the owner that the transfer would take? Is due process served there? And he would have, he would have notice that this event was going to happen tonight? Or was all his notice used with past tax bills and failure to pay the tax bills? I'm just trying to, trying to understand the process.
Yeah, surely there would have been notice of tax bills and past due tax bills. If this, under the tax deed, it's called barring the right of redemption process, a lot of people still refer to it as a foreclosure process, and I'm going to use that term too. So basically, to foreclose that tax deed, the state statute requires that a notice be served upon everybody who has an interest in the property. And it's not an automatic foreclosure. The person who has an interest in the property, in this case, it's an LLC called D4, has 30 days to come and pay off that tax deed. And if they show up with the money within that 30 days, that tax deed's extinguished, they remain the owner of the property. If they don't, then by law, their right to that property is extinguished. And then at that point, whoever holds that tax deed can record an affidavit in the property records showing that they've gone through the process. And then, as John alluded to, it's not necessarily required by the statute, but it's always a good practice to then go and do a quiet title action so you have court order recognizing that process.
And that process has been carried out, start, finish?
In this case?
Yes.
No, it has not begun. We've, the county has held this tax deed since 2014. We've not done anything with it.
I thought what we're looking at tonight was transferring the tax deed.
Right. And so if we transfer that tax deed to the land bank, they could start that process I just described. But that process has not...
That's not, okay.
Yeah, it has not started yet.
And we'll, just to be certain, that means that the owner would be notified and he has 30 days then to clear up the inter-rivers tax bills?
Yes, sir. Not just the owner, but anybody who has a recorded interest in the property. It's been a while since I've looked at the title search on this. I think there is a mortgage company as well, so they would get notice as well.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for John before we get Mr. Dow? Okay, Mr. John, another John.
Yep. I'm John Dow, and I'm the owner of the infamous Golden Isles Inn. And I'm going to try to be dispassionate and positive, but off the top, I want to say but for Taylor Cooper calling me Monday and asking me what I thought about what was on the agenda tonight, and then a call from the chairman inviting me to be here tonight, I feel like this is almost like a communist country, just do what you want. Since June, per Mr. Hunter, the land bank has had this plan, and they've been so thorough, they have gone far beyond what I've done to do with the contaminants. He now knows there's Creosote, a gas station, and I want to tell you, I'm dealing with one thing, and that's asbestos in the building. And it is no easy and no cheap solution. What he raises just raises the bar beyond comprehension. I hope he's wrong, but if he's not, my question is, with all this blue sky, you know, the Brownfields and all, what are they going to do with the property during the period of time that they're trying to apply for a grant? Secondly, what if they don't get the grant? And now the land bank, whomever... And now the land bank, whomever they are, and I don't know the, I've never spoken to the land bank, and, and yet they're here representing themselves to take my property, what are they going to do? Now, are they going to pay all the back taxes, or is that just something, you're giving them the deed, and the land bank is, has the, any outstanding taxes forgiven? This isn't about the money, and I, and I say that with all due respect, I'm embarrassed about it. This is about a building that is, is got troubles. I mean, it's, it is, and, and if it were easy, it would be gone. My question with all this, and, and thank you, Commissioner Booker, to, to tell me that there are things, not one time, not once, have I heard anything positive from Mr. Hunter, the city of Brunswick, other than their code enforcement people knocking on the door with all kinds of apparatus on their belts, and, you know, I thought I was going to be arrested, telling me I had to put a fence around the building and black filter cloth, which I have. When it comes down, I pay people to go put it back. I did one thing, and he mentions the elements in trespassing. I allowed a tow truck driver, I gave him access to the key, the lock, and the inside. He was parking cars inside the gate that no one could see, and he in turn cleaned the property and walked the property, until I got cited by the code enforcement that it was not a permitted use. They have done nothing, nothing, to cooperate or to facilitate this problem. And I say to all of you, you do not know the depths and lengths of the people I have spoken to, and I, I've gone just cold call, I've called people, I've looked at, you know, subsidized housing or hotel, and, and is this going to turn, and I don't mean to be caustic, now we've got the land bank wanting to buy, is this going to be another downtown hotel fiasco? Where every day, we're going to build a hotel, now it's going to be 20,000 square feet, let's not worry about it. Now they own, and that's vacant property, they're going to own a hotel that by their own admission is contaminated, and if they don't get the grant money, what are they going to do? It ain't going away. And they don't have the staff, they don't have the final, financial resources, and, and I am offended that since June, the city has determined there's other environmental issues, not one person has brought it to my attention. I ask you, commissioners, to absolutely not give this to a quasi-public entity, that I'm not sure they know what they're doing, or have the power to do anything. If something good happens, there's one person that can make a decision, that's me, and I'm looking for a decision. Give it to them, and now, and I don't know who them is, but I got to believe there's going to be some sense of, of dysfunction in that group. So I ask you, please, please, encourage the city, the county, grant writers, people that know what may be out there, to embrace me, work with me, and let's see if we can collaborate on getting something done. I don't think, and I say this respectfully, I don't think the land bank is going to take this property to the promised land. I think it's going to turn into a, a bigger problem, more complicated to resolve, and at the end of the day, if there's liability on my part, then I don't know who with the land bank is going to assume the responsibility of if someone is contaminated, who they're going to go to? Right now, they go to me, it's, it's, you know, it's on my skin. I ask you to just not only defer this thing, if you would dismiss it subject, and give me a timeframe to work with all these wonderful minds to see if there is an alternative. And I'm here to answer any questions, and I'm sorry if I'm loud, or, and, and I hope I wasn't discourteous, or.
Okay. No, you, you're fine. Commissioners, anybody got any question? Mr. Dow?
What, what can you do with it? I mean, you've had it for 10 years, what can you do with it? I think the question you're saying, the land bank, if it takes, it's going to be, it's, they're not going to do anything with it, my question to you is, what can you do with it?
David, or Commissioner Quinn, as you well know, I've owned it, he, he said a decade. Go back over the history of the real estate business in Glen County, go back to when we had the bubble burst. At that time, I had, I had a, a model that was 10 times this, showing what I was going to do, I was going to convert it into one-bedroom condos, had it all worked out, had it priced out, pro forma'd out, and then the market turned, couldn't get financing, the people that were going to market said they didn't want to market. The market went south, there is no, look at 17. There's one thing that's been built on Highway 17, and it was an owner user, and it's the dialysis center. There had, and, and I've tried everything, I've tried everything, I don't know, but I'm not giving up. Every day, when I wake up, if I read something in the paper, I call someone up. I had a meeting the other night with someone that talked about VA housing. David, I would love, and my plan was to repurpose it, because the building is built like a fortress. The, the amended flood elevations enhanced me, it raised it up, so that my first grade, my, my finished floor is almost that grade. But I talk to some people, they think, you know, they really would like to use it, and there's others say, bring it to the ground and, and you'll be better off settling vacant late, uh, land. What am I going to do with it? The market's going to determine what I'm going to do with it. What's the market today? It doesn't exist. It won't exist for them, any more than it exists for me.
Well, I mean, you give it to them, and, and they have a vehicle to get the property rehabilitated, to get the taxes extinguished, and to get it back on the property rolls, tax property rolls, and to me, that's an important point that we're not pointing out here, is this property, not only the, the taxes that we haven't received on it, but the, any future taxes, any development up, and we've got to have a process to get this done. I mean, I understand it's been 10 years since you've been working on this, but, and the other thing is, if you paid the taxes.
It all goes away.
It all goes away.
Yeah.
You know?
You made a great assumption, though. Your assumption is that they can do everything he said he could do. They're going to get the grants, they're going to pay the taxes, they're going to get, and, and let me say something, there's, I, I can make representations here too, but I'm not going to promise anything I can't deliver on, and there is no guarantee you're going to get a brownfield. I want to say this, if there is not, what they said is in the ground, which I don't have any knowledge of, then I think the hunt to get fed, any kind of money, to tear down a building, is going to be more difficult than if you've got the contaminants in, in the ground and contaminating the water source. And, and, you know, can they get to doing it quicker than I? I don't know. But I would, I know this, there's one person pushing every day, and that's his one job. This is a, and I say this respectfully, it's a bureaucracy of, I don't even know, you know, what their authority is, or who they are, quite honestly, David.
John, let me, let me say this, first of all, John Hunter is a very hardworking staff person, and the, the land bank, you're looking at two of them right here, we sit on there. So, and I understand your frustration, I've talked to you about this. And I do believe that the right thing to do would be to go forward cautiously, but also together, because we talked about, and, and Commissioner Quinn, correct me if I'm wrong, seeing that we could get the testing done on it, um, with permission of the owner, so we, we could find out what was on there. That was something that we did discuss, and we weren't sure if that could happen.
Mm-hmm. All I'm asking is.
Have we done the phase one environmental on that? There, there isn't a phase one environmental, right?
No, sir, we've not done a phase one environmental.
If the land bank gets it, it could theoretically do a phase one environmental study, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
May I ask you this? Do you have the money?
If I have, if I have it, can they not do it, if we're working in collaboration?
That would be a decision of the land bank board.
Well, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, if I, if I said anything, it's out of frustration. I'm here tonight on a fluke, the chairman and the Brunswick News, otherwise, I'd find out in tomorrow's paper that you conveyed my, the, the deed, the tax deed, to the land bank, and I apologize if I've been offensive to anyone. I would like for the county commission, instead of transferring the tax deed, have the land bank work in collaboration with me, and determine what we might do to bring all these issues. And, and, and Commissioner Quinn, I have an idea of what my mitigation is for the building, but what they've introduced about creosol and a gas station takes it to a whole different level. And, and I think a lot of this needs to be discussed and, you know, vetted out before we go ahead and get worked up about it.
Uh, Mr. Dow, would you be willing to, I mean, if we take a breather on this, would you be willing to sit down with the land bank? And, um, understand fully where they're coming from, see if they can understand where you're coming from, um, since it's going to be a year before they can put a request in for, um, brownfield money, um, let's, let's, let's get everybody at the table. And, uh, would you be willing to sit down with them and?
Absolutely.
Let's talk this thing out, because we're not going to talk it out.
I'd like to collaborate.
We're not going to talk it out here tonight, the only thing we're going to do is vote to transfer the tax deed to them, or not vote to transfer it. If we, if we don't vote to transfer the tax deed, I think this commissioner's going to expect that you'll sit down with them and see what, see what we can do, because at some point in time, um, some decisions will have to be made in the future, okay?
Chairman, I, and county commissioners, I'd be more than happy to do that. I'd like the land bank, the planners, the grant writers.
Okay.
All these people, and let's sit down, I understand it's an eyesore.
Yeah.
I'm not a, you know.
Just, just don't, just don't leave here tonight and go back to status quo, you know, we got to, we got to, you know, be willing, and let's all sit at the table. John, great guy, uh, you know, but, and, and I know you're frustrated, I know you are, if I was in your shoes, um, you know, I'd be frustrated too, but, uh, you know, we, we're going to plow through that, and we're going to, we're going to calm down, and we're going to get it, get to the table, and let's, let's, let's talk this thing out, okay?
I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah.
In fact, I, I, I applaud that, if you so moved.
What sort of timeframe you talking about there, Mr. Chairman? I mean, this has been going on and on and on and on, and, look, he owes $125,000 of back taxes, the building needs to be remediated, what we're, what, what's being suggested here is somehow, there, there's a government fund that's going to come and, and remediate a piece of private property upon which they owe the local taxing authority $125,000. I mean, is that real, is that really realistic? And, um, if, if so, what sort of timeframe we have to figure that out before we, I mean...
My, 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 my answer is, I, I don't know, except that I have heard from John that they can't even put a request for a grant in for a year. Uh, so, so, I mean, if, if we transfer the tax deed, uh, they're not going to be able to do anything with it. Uh, you know, so I think this is the point right here where this, you know, Mr. Dow?
Commissioner Murphy.
The city.
Let me say this.
We've got two land bank members here, we've got two land bank members here, uh, you know, if they're all willing, I'm willing to go with it, let them sit, let them get to the table.
Are there any land bank members here?
Pardon me?
We are on the land bank.
Okay, let me respond to Commissioner Murphy. If the property's mitigated, it becomes immediately marketable, and obviously, before title gets transferred, tax deeds, in order to transfer clear title, all the expenses have to be paid, and the only expense I have is taxes. So, your concern about the back taxes, the back taxes aren't going to get paid until the property changes hands, can't change hands until it's remediated, and I'm working on that.
What, what I'm being, what's being suggested to me here is that there is some, some, who knows who, government agency that's going to come in and remediate a piece of private property for $300,000 or $400,000, and all of a sudden, he'll be able to sell it? What agency is that?
Uh.
I mean, is that really real-world practical?
Uh, Commissioner Murphy, all I can tell you is what they told me, and what I witnessed. The, the city had a Brownfield grant, where I was a advisory board member, and they told me that's what happened. The guy, his name was Al, Al owned, he owns a car lot over there now, but he owned this property too, and it used to be the Mercedes, um, place, and it was, you know, and, and he wanted to sell it to a church group. Well, from my understanding, that's what they did. They also told me that, and I got reports from the city staff, I didn't go witness them doing the cleanup, but they cleaned up a couple other places that had, um, um, tanks, gas tanks. So, it made the properties more marketable. Now, I didn't know you could do that either, but I'm just telling you what they told me.
Well, I'm sure it's going to make the property more, more marketable if it's been mitigated, but my question is, who foots the bill for that?
It's a grant from EPA, uh, the Brownfield program.
Well, how long is it going to take to find out if that's still an applicable, applicable program? That's a good question, that's really at the heart of my question, is, this is, keeps going on and on and on, the tax bill keeps going up, how long will it take?
Well, well, my, my other concern was the land bank taking the liability for the property itself, because there is more than just, we don't even know what it would take to clean it up, and the land bank has this amount of money. So, uh, that was a concern, even though I know we talked about it, but when, even when John told me, because I didn't know about the asbestos in the building, on top of what John had found out, the possibility of having the creosol operation there. So, but I do know that it's very expensive to, to, uh, to take care of these things, so.
Well, you're right, but we've got a problem, it's an ongoing problem, the land bank has that much money, and Mr. Dow has that much money, and we got to solve the problem, and, and the land bank was created to try to solve these problems, and now we got, you know, you know, we're bumping up against one of the bigger problems in Glen County, and it seemed, in, in the city of Brunswick, and it seems like we're stuck in the mud again.
But I think you, you got to get back to, we know we have a way to apply for brownfield through the land bank. I don't know if we, we really know right now if this program that Commissioner Booker's talking about is actually active. I also know, correct me if I'm wrong, John, that in order to begin to extinguish the tax liability, that's not going to happen overnight, that's going to take a process, so the longer we delay that process, it's going to be that much longer till we get it done, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Where's the land bank get the money for taxes?
It's, it's set up in a way by the state of Georgia to extinguish the taxes, is that correct, John?
That, that's correct, the land bank has explicitly given the authority, uh, under the agreement that y'all approved, along with the city of Brunswick and the Glen County School Board, that after the acquisition of the tax deeds and the establishment of title, the land bank is able to extinguish all outstanding taxes on that property.
By paying them, or?
It extinguishes, they are, they are wiped, they are wiped away, they, they no longer exist.
So no one gets the money?
So no one gets that money, and, and the, the reason the land bank is set up to do that is because they typically... And, and the, the reason the land bank is set up to do that, is because they typically are taking on these liabilities for properties that have been longstanding problems. So that's kind of the, the internal process. The idea then is, and theoretically, I'm, I'm not saying definitively, is that the, as, once the land bank has possession of that property, the taxes are taken care of, the land bank might not actually have to be the one to take care of the remediation issues on the site. They could work a deal with the developer that that's all taken care of in lieu of a sale.
Sure, they sell it for a dollar, correct?
Correct. Or whatever they felt was the appropriate amount, based on what their priorities for the community are.
And the idea being, let's get it back on the tax rolls, correct?
Exactly, yes, sir.
But, I guess, the most prevalent thing that I heard, the county doesn't get any money, it's extinguished. If I stay there, and if I sell it, or when I sell it, you get all your money. So you don't get any tax dollars, it's extinguished. And, and Commissioner Quinn, you're making the, the assumption that they're gonna get a grant. And, and, you know, I think it's at least worth exploring what kind of collaboration we can come together with, and see what kind of grants are out there with, you know...
John, when's our next land bank meeting?
We, we have not set a date for it yet.
Is it January?
More than likely early January, sir.
Okay, how much time do you need to collaborate?
I don't know, Commissioner.
I mean, you're talking about 30 days, 60 days?
I don't know, I don't know anything about the land bank, so I can't tell you when to collaborate. They're not meeting until January, so I'll, I'll collaborate in January.
Isn't the real issue, Commissioner O'Quinn and Commissioner Booker, is whether Mr. Dow has the capacity to get a grant, as you were saying, Mr. Al got to clean up his property? And, and, and we would think that that might be done in a rather expedited fashion, 30, 45, 60 days. And if it's not available, I mean, and there's no possibility that he's gonna mitigate this, you know, with funds that he has now, and the only hope is that an entity like a, a land bank could, could go down that path. If it's not available to you, I think we need to move forward. But, but, you know, I, I think it would be reasonable to explore Commissioner Booker's concern that there is a, a process available, a, a program available.
If we could defer it to January's meeting, to give time, give time for collaboration and checking.
To find out if that program even exists.
Right, or it may be another, another way.
Well...
Right.
If there is some government agency willing to mitigate private property at the government's expense in this situation, great, let's find it, but we should be able to know that sooner rather than later, and...
Right.
'Cause it, I mean, it's just, you just can't keep deferring, to deferring, to deferring. I remember, this came before one of our work sessions, was it a year ago, a little, more than a year ago, when we spent about five seconds discussing it, and just, you know, moved on. I, I just, what just happened here? You know, why aren't we dealing with this? Finally, we got a, you know, system to deal with this, so let's deal with it.
And could we, could we bring this to a, a work session update in, in January, to have a report? Would, would that be appropriate? You know?
That's what the commission wishes to do.
Let, let's explore the options, and then, and then see what other things, I, I don't know.
Yeah, let's have it, I agree, Commissioner Neil, to, why don't we defer it to the, to the work session in January? If y'all agree.
Is that all right? Because everybody agrees that something's got to be done.
With the hopes that we'll have a determination if there is a private program avail, or a government program available to a private citizen, as opposed to a government agency.
Well, that's, that's, that's...
You make it sound like there's no such thing, though, Commissioner Murphy. You, you think where it's, that's pie in the sky, that there may be a grant like that?
I, I have no idea, but, I mean, Mr. Hunter comes here saying that, you know, that there is a mechanism by which a government agency can apply for a brownfield grant. Commissioner Booker, you know, suggests that he's heard of this in the past. It just would shock me with the limited money that all the governments of the country, government agencies in the country have, that they would be willing to bail out a private citizen, let the private citizen go on, merely on the way, and sell the property and take all the profit. I don't get that, but maybe there is a government program like that. So yeah, count me skeptical, real skeptical, okay?
Are you skeptical about getting the brownfield grant?
No, I'm not. I think it's, I think it's the only hope we got.
I'm not skeptical about the brownfield, whether you get it the first year, the second year, I'm, I'm not skeptical about that.
Well, let, let me suggest this. We have two of our fellow commissioners that serve on the land bank. All right, instead of asking a bunch of questions about when we might, or should we, what do we do, why don't we let those two fellows take the lead? They're on the land bank, they're gonna be involved for this whole thing. Let's follow their lead, and they've heard everything been said here tonight, and let them move forward, as our representatives on the land bank, and then they report back to us when they think we need to do something. I, I, I don't know about setting a timeframe. I mean, I don't know the land bank's schedule, I don't know how long it'll take them to look into things, decide what they can do, what they can't, I, I don't know.
And the holidays, too, I was gonna mention that.
Yeah, yeah, you know, so, so, they, they've heard everything, everybody's said here.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
They've heard everything we've said, let them take this matter up with the land bank and Mr. Dow, and then they come back to us when they think they're ready to come back to us. Is that fair enough?
Mr. Chairman, could I make a motion, then, that we defer this action until the January work session?
I thought we were gonna, I don't know if those gentlemen are available. I thought it was until the two members put it back on the agenda.
Defer it until a future date, as, to, to be determined. And, and, I mean, they may come here and say, "We're not ready to talk to you all in January," you know? So it, it leaves it open for them to do their thing. I think that's the best thing.
Sounds good, yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would make my motion, then, to defer until sometime in the future.
Got a second? All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I call the motion. All those in favor, sign the flag raising right hand. That is unanimous, thank you all.
Thank you very much, commissioners, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Attorney.
Hey, hey, hang on, are you gonna ask him if we have executive session?
I'm asking.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm sitting here, looking, going through my, my papers, and I'm, I'm kinda remembering 48 hours ago, at a work session, it was suggested to me that a, a, a vote was gonna be taken, of whether we had a two-year timeframe for a SPOLOST, or a five-year timeframe. And I'm looking at this piece of paper that goes, "Item to be added to the agenda, proposed motion to add an item to the agenda, consider proposed collection period for the SPOLOST tax." Did we just forget about that, or...
That, that was something that, that was something we said that we'd have to add if we want to, and, and in between then and now, I heard from enough of the commissioners, they said they didn't wanna add it, so we didn't have to add it, so we didn't.
But at the work session, we also said we're gonna vote on it tonight, did we decide...
Well, if we added it.
Okay, okay, I got it.
It's not on the agenda.
All right, okay, so that's how it worked?
Where were you?
I was, I was sitting here, uh...
You didn't talk to him?
No, he didn't talk to me, no, I didn't know that, but...
He talked us into talking, but not in the work session.
Okay, that's a perfect, perfectly clear, yeah.
You bring your winter coat?
No, I did, I did bring my winter coat, trust me.
Okay, that's, that's what's important.
All right, thank you for clarifying that for me, appreciate it.
Mr. Attorney, is your voice well enough to...
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna defer to you on that one, and I'll be glad to talk to y'all about potential litigation, if you, if you wish.
Okay, need a motion to go into executive session? Hey, we'll adjourn this meeting, go home.
I'll make a motion that we'll read time into the minutes, and is, is it essential, Mr. Attorney? I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn instead.
Second.
Oh, we got seconds on that.
Motion's second, all those in favor, sign the flag raising right hand. There you go. Thank you.